Hi, welcome everyone to Tuesday, October 9th School Board Meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you would like to participate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stephen is going to do it. Thank you. And now we'd like to do a welcome greeting. Commissioner Kerry?
I'll offer the universal greeting tonight on Monica's request. If you would join me, that would be nice. I may go slowly. We offer you peace.
We offer you peace.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you love.
We offer you love.
We hear your needs.
We hear your needs.
We see your beauty.
We see your beauty.
We feel your feelings.
We feel your feelings.
We honor -- we are all smart in our own way.
We are all smart in our own way.
And we honor that in you.
And we honor that in you.
Let us work together.
Let us work together. Thank you, Commissioner Kerry.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We have a number of motions to work the agenda around -- hold on, sorry. Go ahead.
So I move to make -- I make a motion to amend the agenda.
Thank you.
In the following manner. So number -- item number four, the consent agenda, we're going to add in the word minutes to item E. So that is a -- where is this?
Right here, I got you. Right here.
The D-E-N-I minutes, committee minutes. And then item F is the policy and governance minutes. So we're adding in the word minutes.
Next.
Next, on item C, item six, board deliberation, we're going to make that resolutions, the V S B A, item six B, consideration of V S B A resolutions, plural.
Thank you.
Item number seven, under committee reports, we're adding two slides.
A slide deck.
A slide deck for item C, capital plan option. Item D, we're going to add the word and in policy and governance.
Item E.
Item E.
Yep, next.
So item number eight, superintendent's report, we're going to update item C to recommendations to endorse early education task force. And we're adding the document of a pre-K task force resolution. Also under item eight superintendent's report, item D will now be item E. And item D will be listed now as practice on media statements by staff.
Great, and one last one.
And finally, we have item 10 for executive session, and the language for that will be motions go into executive session under authority of one V S A 313A 1B and E to discuss labor relations agreements with employees and to also discuss pending or probable civil litigation to which the board is or may be a party and where premature public knowledge as to either situation would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Fisher.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The agenda has been approved. Are there any items that we would like to pull from the consent agenda?
I thought the D-E-N-I committee minutes were approved last month.
Okay.
So are we striking for -- okay.
Okay, so we can strike for E? Thank you. Commissioner Vachier. Okay, then I would like someone to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, 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 right. I'll so move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you for approving the consent agenda. Next on the agenda is the public comment. Thank you, public, for coming. We have no public speakers.
No public comment.
At this time. Anyone? Okay, we will move on. We have a full meeting, so thank you. Next, we will then move down to the chair's report. I want to take this opportunity to thank all the school board members, city councilor mayor, for participating in the B H S press conference last week, and our student representatives for being there and speaking. Thank you for your presence. And I would like to turn over my time to Commissioner Curry, who's our B H S bond campaign chair.
Chair.
Chair, thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for an update. Thank you. Co-chair, exactly. And the absence of Commissioner Barlow, who's on the phone remotely.
Yeah, so I'd just like to thank Chair Wool and Commissioner Barlow, Commissioner Martine, Kate Stein. We all kind of pulled our energy together and launched the bond information campaign. And that started with setting up a GoFundMe page and coming up with a plan to raise the money and create a couple priorities. So first, I'd just like to thank anyone who has already donated and ask if all commissioners could please donate to the best of your ability. Any amount is welcome, and I think it just demonstrates to the community that we're all 100% behind this, because it looks a little weird if we are absent from that effort. So our first priority, it looks like it's going to be lawn signs, and then we're going to kind of triage what we have the capacity to develop and deploy. But as folks have ideas, please, there's a Google spreadsheet that everybody has access to, please just throw them up there. Don't worry about organizing it, and I'll track those things and, you know, send them along anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can I -- I'm sorry, I forgot to say that the B H S Boosters Club gave us $500, which is amazing. And great appreciation for anyone in this room or watching at home for that gift. And then other people have stepped up and donated on the page as well, so please, if you recognize anyone, send him a little thank you note.
When you get a minute. Thank you for that update. Now, yep, great. Thank you for that update, Commissioner Curry. And I know we are actively presenting at NPAs last week and this week, as well as PTOs at each of the individual schools, and we will be connecting Superintendent and I, Obeng, with faculty as well to engage them. I presented to the B E A last week as well, and we're appreciative of their -- the opportunity to speak with them and engage them. So thank you, Commissioner Curry, and Commissioner Barlow, and all those commissioners that have been supportive in the last two weeks as we go forward to the next four. Next on the agenda is board deliberation. I would ask Commissioner Wick to present item A, resolution on new voices law policy.
Thank you, Chair Wool. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolution called Creation of New Voices Law Policy Ad hoc Advisory Committee. It's a brief motion, so I'll just read it. The new voices law, codified at Title 16 Vermont Statute, Section 1623, is intended, quote, "to ensure free speech and free press protections for both public school students and students at public institutions of higher ed in this state in order to encourage students to become educated, informed, and responsible members of society," end quote. The Burlington Board of School Commissioners hereby creates the following non-binding ad hoc advisory committee. Purpose of this ad hoc committee: To recommend to the Burlington Board of School Commissioners a policy for adoption by the full school board pursuant to Title 16 Vermont Statutes, Section 1623I, which requires adoption of a written policy consistent with the new voices law. Members of the committee include Noel Green, principal of B H S, Tracy Griffith, journalism professor at St. Michael's College, Mike Donahue of the Vermont Press Association and the New England First Amendment Coalition, Beth Fialco Casey, B H S Register's faculty advisor, and the B H S Register co-editors, and myself. The expected duration of this committee, it will be the committee's goal to make a policy recommendation to the full school board within 60 days of the date hereof, meaning today. Anyone wish to second my motion? Commissioner, thank you. Thank you. Chair Wool, we have a second.
Great. Any discussion? Sorry, the mic was going out. Commissioner Curry?
Thanks. Just a little trigger warning for Superintendent Obeng. I'm sorry to pick on you a little bit, but I am going to not support this motion, this resolution, because I believe our current governance policy framework gives us the tools we need to address this issue. One of the policies indicates that the superintendent shall not allow the district to become out of compliance with federal, state, or local laws. And so we were out of compliance, and that is the responsibility of the superintendent and the administration. And we -- what I would prefer to see is that we develop a requirement that the superintendent report to us. I think there is actually a requirement that the superintendent report to us when the district is out of compliance. And so I did not see that process followed, and that would be a reason for the board to engage the superintendent in that conversation. And, you know, I have my own theories about why it wasn't followed in terms of new staff and school year and a lot going on, confidentiality, rules, confusion, and other plausible reasons. But the board does have the tool to engage the superintendent in that conversation, and I think that it would have been appropriate to do that, and it would have been a good way for the board to experience how to use the tools of policy governance in a way that demonstrates accountability, and it would have been possible to request that the superintendent use some of those resources mentioned in the resolution to help the district and set that as, you know, not only a suggestion but more of a, you know, we would like to see this, or we would like to have this conversation at the next board meeting, or something like that. But I don't support the resolution for that reason.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Sorry. Any other commissioners would like to speak? Discuss? All right, so we have the first, we have the second, and we'll -- all those in favor of passing the resolution, Creation of New Voices Law Policy Ad hoc Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Curry? Any abstentions? All right, the resolution passes. Thank you, Commissioner Wick, for your time and preparation for us to become compliant with this law. Next on the agenda is Commissioner Fisher. I would ask that you speak to item B, Consideration of V S B A Resolutions.
Thank you, Chair Wool. So the V S B A has a number of resolutions that are up for vote and later this month. Kathy, Commissioner Allwell is going to represent us and be our vote, and so we need to vote as a board which ones we support. So I'm going to read, summarize each one of these, and then we'll do a vote on whether we support that resolution or not. And we can also allow for some quick comments or questions before we vote. So questions before we dive in. Okay, I want to start with the resolutions number one through six, which are exceptional resolutions submitted by our board. So I'm going to assume that we're -- we can all vote on these as a block. Anyone opposed to that? All right, all those in favor of approving resolutions one through six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. One through six approved. Number seven was withdrawn as a duplicate. Number eight, I believe, is also us. It's all yes. So this is encouraging the V S B A to include teachers as active participants in the consideration of educational issues. So any discussion? All those in favor -- oh, Commissioner Kerry?
Well, I'm surprised that the Vermont School Board Association did not support this because the wording is almost identical to their description of having students on the local boards. So they're -- what they're doing is excluding teachers but including students, and that seems ironic to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerry. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Curry?
I mean, I guess I'd stay in the obvious. I think teachers have a clear and present conflict of interest since they benefit financially from the entity that they would be on the governing board for, so the need to abstain from a range of activities would be fairly frequent for a period of time during the year. That being said, I can envision school boards being completely reorganized to look totally different from anything we know now, to have that involvement. That conflict would still be present, but I could envision a way that it could be evolved, but I just don't think it would look like it would use the current tools of being elected officials and all that.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of resolution number eight, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstention? Number eight passes. Number nine is from Kingdom East, and they are looking for -- non-operating towns don't actually have operating schools. They have a board and they do, I forget what it's called, not just choice, but there's another word for it, where they send their kids to a different.
Ascending.
Ascending school, right. Sending district. So they are looking for the V S B A to reorganize so that one region represents all of those non-operating boards, as opposed to them being geographically organized. Questions, comments, discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, resolution passes. Number 10 from Marlboro School District, this is encouraging the V S B A to essentially recruit new board members and to actively do that. Discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, say aye. Opposed? Abstain? Resolution passes. Resolution proposal number 11. This motion is in regards to security and is requesting that any legislation be left to individual school boards. I believe it's a little confusing. I think it's supposed to be towards the legislature, but it doesn't exactly say that. But essentially, they're saying let the local school boards handle any legislation around security and safety.
Yes.
Discussion?
It does like be resolved.
Yep.
Yeah, but it says it's weird wording because it says the board resolves, as opposed to the V S B A resolves to, you know, ask that the Vermont Legislature, which is how other ones are formatted. So it's.
Okay.
That's what I don't get. Commissioner Vachier?
So if this doesn't pass, so this is giving the safety issue to local school boards?
I -- my interpretation is that they are asking that they be allowed, that they specifically are being allowed to set their own security laws. And so my interpretation is that this, there's structural issues with this resolution, and it's not formatted, but it might end up at the conference being rewritten to say the V S B A recommends to the legislature that the basic legislature doesn't make any laws around security.
And if this doesn't pass, we, the legislature makes the laws?
Legislature can make the laws no matter what. I don't think that even if there's a V S B A resolution that it's binding.
Okay.
Does this like, if it's safety as in like infrastructure, so if like a building is failing, or is it specifically like security?
Safety and security.
Like, for example, if we have a RAM fail, could like, is there a part, like, are they saying the legislature can literally say nothing at all?
It doesn't, it doesn't mention that. I think it's really, I mean, when you look at the whereas part, they're really talking about that they are a small rural school, and they're comparing it to actually us, I think, you know? So they don't, they don't reference infrastructure in terms of safety of infrastructure against failure. Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I think maybe Superintendent Obeng can confirm this, that there's federal money for safety and security that has regulatory frameworks that this school may not be able to meet, and so it may be that they need the money, some money, to do something, but complying with the, all the regulations would be onerous for them, so they, I'm just hypothesizing that they may be asking for somewhat of an exemption to get some money, because the state just got the, that grant money recently.
So the other thing that we could do is we could abstain from this, right? If we don't have enough information about really understanding the context of this, or we can instruct Commissioner Allwell to participate in the discussion and vote as she sees fit.
Okay.
So I see some nods.
I like it's.
So I'll make the motion.
I like the idea of abstaining.
Abstaining. So I'm going to make the motion that we abstain from making a vote on this, and we give Commissioner Allwell the ability to vote if it's significantly, hmm, how do I say that?
We need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we abstain. I think that's simple.
Second. Martine, second? Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, thank you. We are, yeah. All right. Number 12, Moratorium on Introduction of New Education Legislature. My interpretation of this is that this board is a little bit weary from all of the changes in legislation around education, and they're asking for a pause to implement, understand, and basically asking the legislature and governor to not make any laws while we, while all of the school boards settle down from the recent changes. Discussion? Say it.
Does that thing include changing of old laws?
It's not clear. It just says introduction of new legislation. So if you were going to change an old law, you'd have to do it through a legislation.
So that would not be allowed?
It would not be allowed.
Okay.
Well, so again, this is non-binding.
Yeah.
Right? It's an urging the legislature and governor. Commissioner Vachier?
So this would, since these aren't laws, they're just recommendations, this wouldn't necessarily stop the agency of education and the legislators from making new laws?
My interpretation is this will do nothing to stop them. It is purely symbolic.
Okay.
It's my own personal opinion. Is that laugh an endorsement of that?
All right, next.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Curry?
I think the legislature has to make laws sometimes when the federal government makes laws and the legislature is forced into the position of needing to address them.
Well said. Yep.
All right, any other discussion?
Okay.
All right, so for the moratorium, all those in favor, say aye.
One?
Yep. All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Two abstentions. Commissioner Billsbury and Gulick. Gulick?
Gulick, yep. Okay.
Commissioner Martine. All right, thank you. All right, number 13, cost containment. This recom, this, my analysis of this is that they are asking that the legislature fund any, no, I'm sorry, any legislature is done prior to the development of school budgets and voting process for any future fiscal year. So we have experienced this where they make, you know, we set our budget, and then they come along and they make some deal, or they don't make a deal, we're headed to the veto, they make some laws, and then it changes what the impact of our budget is, right? So good example. Well, this is withdrawn.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, shit.
You're looking at 15 or 13?
13.
That was 13. Withdrawn, thank you, Chair Wool. Oh, I'm so excited by that one. All right, number 14, keeping students safe from gun violence. I encourage you to read the whereas. It's very thorough, and so this is a resolution to call on the U.S. Congress to enact a rational policy to keep our students safe from gun violence and call on the Vermont Legislature to explore further safety measures. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Number 15, cost containment. So this is in response to the Alla School mergers Act 70, right? And so I think that this is basically 60, 46, sorry, Act 46, that this is basically saying figure out whether it saved us money. And not fund new mandates or programs that are not, now not paid from the education fund. So don't mandate that, requesting that they, the A O E not mandate programs or obligations that we have to find funding for.
Correct.
Commissioner Hart?
Did the board recommend why they don't?
That's an excellent question. There was, I could find no explanation as to the rationale for their recommendations.
It seems like a pretty good idea for saving money to figure out how much money we're saving, but.
Commissioner Curry?
I like the part of, I like this resolution in that it does ask for that financial analysis because it would be interesting to know if the intended goal of Act 46 was met, and I know that the governor is proposing to fund more pre-K and higher ed out of the existing amount of money on the table in the ed fund, and so I think this resolution speaks to that well to register a vote opposing that, which I personally do.
Let's make a motion.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. Number 16, supervisory unions. This relates to how supervisory unions are formed and who gets votes, and essentially that there's an imbalance based on budget. So I was doing a little reading on this in that, you know, when they merge, they're getting equal voices, or I'm sorry, when they merge, they have to vote on changing the makeup of the board. And so I think some of the boards feel it's unfair that they are significantly larger than of the other boards in terms of costs and budget, and yet they have equal say in the other, members don't want to approve changing the makeup. So, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. Number 17, inequitable debt burdens in districts required to merge. So this has to do with the financial side of merging districts, so that they are saying the V S B A should advocate for legislation that will allow districts to devise mechanisms to ease transitions for Act 46 towns. So discussion? All right, all those in favor of passing, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Abstention? Commissioner Curry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Billsbury abstains. Motion passes. Number 19, civil discourse.
18.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Looking ahead. Is there 19? Yeah.
Yeah.
18, civil discourse. The V S B A urges all educational stakeholders to teach, you can read the resolve, teach and model conflict resolution consensus building. and model conflict resolution consensus building, and education stakeholders to engage in civil discourse. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes unanimously. And now, number 19, the Commission on Public School Employee Health Benefits. So this commission was formed by, correct me if I'm wrong, formed by the legislature to explore the, one healthcare plan for all teachers across the state, and the VSB gets representatives on it. And so this dictates how those representatives are selected and what the requirements are.
Criteria, yep.
Criteria, yep.
Great.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Commissioner Carey abstains, and the motion carries.
Great. All set.
That it?
Yeah.
Super. Thank you for your, the efficiency.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Next on the agenda, under Board Deliberation, is Item C, the First Reading Policy Update Proposals. I'll ask Commissioner Wick to present.
Thank you, Chair Wall. Thank you, Chair Wall.
Great. All right.
Excuse me. Here's how I'd like to proceed on, on this one. I'll make a motion to, a motion to move these policy changes on to a second reading and a vote at our next regularly scheduled board meeting in November. So tonight is effectively just a first reading, an opportunity for us to discuss and, if desired, propose amendments to some of these policies, new policies, or edits to existing policies. These policies came out of the Policy and Governance Committee. So I think we'll take them one at a time in turn. If you have them in front of you, great. If you don't, they're available on Board Docs. And.
We're going to give a time limit on each of them.
Yeah. And, and what we're going to do time-wise is we're going to attempt to keep this reasonably limited in time. According to Chair Wall, each person will get an opportunity who wishes to speak, but not to exceed two minutes. And with the approval of the chair, after everyone's had a chance to speak who wishes, someone can have a second bite at the apple to speak for up to additional two minutes. Yes?
I'm sorry, are you making the motion now, or are we going to read and discuss these and make a motion later?
I think I'll make, I think I'll make the motion now, have it seconded, and then we'll start the discussion. So I would like to make a motion to approve the entire set of policy changes before you and post it on Board Docs, to, to approve them for first reading and move them on to a second reading and a final vote to adopt in the November regular board meeting. May I have a second?
Of course.
Co-chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, Gorman, I think seconded first, I'm sorry, if that's okay. Okay, now we'll open discussion. We'll start with, and I've done these, there are six pages, they're not that thick or dense, so I apologize, but we're, we're going through in order of our policies. So we'll start with Section 2. I suppose I'll read it. So I propose to add, we propose to add, this was, by the way, the unanimous recommendation of the Policy and Governance Committee at its last meeting, last Thursday, Policy 2.2B. This would be a new policy in the executive limitations section of our policies. Here goes. The superintendent shall not fail to develop, maintain, and utilize written objective recruitment, hiring, and retention policies and procedures for each category of employee in the school district, which policies and procedures shall be made available upon request. Such policies and procedures shall not fail to include a detailed and authentic stakeholder engagement process relating to hiring district employees, which engagement process shall be appropriate with respect to the type of employee to be hired. And there are two more in this section, so we'll take it by section. Next addition to Section 2, executive limitations is Policy 2.9, this is new. The superintendent shall not fail to create, maintain, update, and make available upon request a current organizational chart of the school district that clearly depicts and describes the organizational structure of the Burlington School District, the central office, each school, et cetera, and the relationships and relative ranks of all employees and independent contractors. Next item is new Policy 2.10. The superintendent shall not fail to develop, maintain, and regularly share with the board an objective and detailed scorecard or rubric that tracks and measures the progress and success of each of our schools in achieving our global ends. If I may, Chair Wall, I, I think we take the, unless you'd like to override me, we take the questions on this block and then, or discussion, and then we move on to the next block?
Great, yep.
Okay. And I think Chair has authorized me to sort of manage this part of the evening. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. If you will indulge, indulge me, I'd just like to go through my comments, and I've shared this Google Doc with everyone, so I don't know if people have it open, but I can just go through. So in, so because I still believe that we have a policy governance framework, I'd like to try and adhere to that as closely as possible because, as far as I know, the board hasn't voted to not have a policy governance framework. So what I would suggest is that Policy 2 be about recruitment, hiring, and treatment of staff, so that we nest everything under one category, and that we have a broad policy statement to govern this section. And the policy statement I would recommend is to accomplish its global ends. The district seeks to hire and retain a diverse leadership, instructional, and support staff that reflects the student body and community to the greatest extent possible. And then recommend language for Policy 2.2B. With respect to hiring and retaining employees, the superintendent shall not fail to develop, maintain, and utilize written recruitment, hiring, and retention systems and procedures, because this is the policy. So if the superintendent were going to go create another policy, it would kind of violate our, our policy governance structure. So this is the policy we're looking at. What we're, I think what we're asking for is systems and procedures for each category of employee in the school district, which policies and, which proceeds, systems and procedures shall be made available through monitoring reports associated with this policy. The board can request a monitoring report anytime, if you want to put it on the next board agenda. It doesn't have to be strictly, like, there's no policy governance god that's saying you can only look at a monitoring report on the month that it's on your calendar. So I'd recommend that we make them available through monitoring reports associated with this policy. Such systems and procedures shall not fail to include a detailed and stakeholder engagement process, which I think would need to be defined, what the expectation is. And so that would be part of the monitoring report metrics, like what that means, what, what the board's actually looking for. Related to hiring district employees, which engagement process, again, whatever that means, shall be appropriate with respect to the type of employee to be hired. There's a lot there, I just don't understand, I don't know, like, how we decide what engagement process we want with different types of employees. And so I think there's a lot of, I think there's more work to be done there. So I would request that the committee have that conversation and, and delve into that so it's clear what the expectation is. And that could be designing a monitoring report, and that could be in that. Then I would recommend 2.2C come next. And I don't think I really have any real changes to that, except G, that A through F might not actually be all encompassing of what the board wants in a report. And so G would be, if there's some reason that the, that the board wanted additional information, that would just need to be communicated to the superintendent at least 10 days before the report was due, rather than at the last minute. So there's some accountability on both sides. Then, so, that's it. 2.2, done.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Any other comments on this batch, Superintendent?
Sure, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Testing, one, two, three. Just indulge me for a minute. First of all, let me thank the, the committee for its ambitious endeavor, quite an amount of work you've done in a short period of time. And I, I don't have any sort of clear disagreement with the actions that are going, but I do have some recommendations I think I need to put forward before you proceed moving forward. One of the things I would, I would say that I think the, the entire board needs more conversations around what the goals and outcomes are, because that should happen in terms of embedding into whatever policies that you're trying to move forward. And I'm not sure how many people have had an opportunity to really have a conversation around where we want to go. I would say that we've engaged a, a really excellent consultant in Michael Healy, and I would recommend the Policy and Governance Committee use him to facilitate, to sort of articulate what you're trying to achieve. And I think he could probably give some guidance in terms of where certain policies should go. And there are a number of things in here that are really tasks, I don't really see as level of policies, but I know that Michael has strategies within governance that could lead itself to the, the committee to share, to say, oh, do we want to get this accomplished? This is how we can do it and move forward. So if you, just, just a couple of things. One, the, and I was reading the document, Section 5 or overarching policies, so that's a, a new set of, of policies, a fifth set. So if we add a fifth set, we're no longer using policy governance, because policy governance is the four, the four areas. So the board needs to kind of have a conversation around what governance model it wants to engage in, in specifically around moving forward with that. And I, and I, and I, once again, I think Michael Healy can help in sort of guiding the board and saying, okay, what is it you're trying to achieve? How does it fit into your current policies? And how do you get that? And what other operational strategies can you engage with your superintendent staff to get the outcomes that you want? Because I could see, I wouldn't want the, the board to feel the only tool they have is just on a monthly basis to create policies for things that are on here, they're tasks. We have to find ways, and some of that comes through some conversations. So I would, that would be my recommendation. I do have comments around many of the things, but I think I'll, I'll stop there, just as that recommendation. I would hope that the, the committee would take, take me up on my recommendation and have Michael support the committee in terms of trying to answer some of their questions and come up with strategies. And I'd be happy to engage in some of those conversations when needed.
Thank you, Superintendent Obang. Any other comments on this block of policies? Commissioner Fisher?
I agree with Commissioner Curry that, I like the language that she used around the, the systems as opposed to the policies, because I agree that this, this should be the policy.
Yep. Excellent. And I was going to comment and thank Commissioner Curry for her constructive criticism of it, and, and I agree with the systems comment. And I've been carefully reading the Roberts Rules on amending policies, and, and we'll, we'll take your comments back and we'll see what edits we're comfortable with. Clearly, the systems one is very comfortable. And I like how Commissioner Curry has essentially embedded the next block on page one up into 2.2. So that's really housekeeping. And Roberts Rules allows us to actually continue forth next time with a second reading, as long as we make amendments that are more housekeeping and that don't expand the scope of the policy that we read in the first reading. So I believe that almost everything Commissioner Curry said is consistent with that, that principle, so that nothing is a deal stopper here, even if we were to accept all of her proposed suggestions. And there's one other thing I wanted to speak to briefly. It is true, and boy, as I'm learning, as we're learning in the policy committee, this is an evolving process. We don't think that our work is perfect, just as the current policies are not perfect. It's a matter of continuous improvement. And the thing about what Michael Healy said is, you know, you start at a certain level of generality, which is what we've attempted to do, just to get something that we believe in on the books. And then we may find that we need more specifics. So these policies are subject to further editing in the future. But the good news is, under policy governance, if we're very general in our rule, the good news for the superintendent is that means he may make any reasonable interpretation of our policy. So for example, I think the question that Commissioner Curry raised about one of the, I don't know what an engagement process means, and we really need to define it. Well, the good news for the superintendent is, if we haven't defined it ourselves, he may use any reasonable interpretation of authentic stakeholder engagement process for a particular type of employee to be hired. So it gives a superintendent a lot of latitude, and therefore, we will find out if we like the latitude he's selected, and if we don't, as Michael Healy would say, then we go to the next level of specificity, and so on, and so forth. So I, I think those are all excellent comments from Superintendent Obang and Commissioner Curry, and I thank, I thank you on behalf of the committee for both of those. I'd like to move on to the next batch. Bottom of page one. This is adding to Policy 2.2, where the superintendent shall not, remember, forgive all this negative language, the nature of policy governance is that the executive limitations have to be recited in the negative. So what, what, what shall the superintendent fail, not fail to do? Well, in this case, we're suggesting adding number six, or as Commissioner Curry suggested, nesting it up above in, in a similar section, but here's the language. Superintendent shall not fail to recommend the hiring of a permanent or interim building leader, assistant building leader, district senior director, or district director to the board, without providing the following information in written format to the board a minimum of five business days prior to seeking the board's approval of the hire. Subsection A, this is what, what documentation we as a board want. A, the posted job description slash specification. B, the resume of the recommended hire. C, a summary of the candidate pool. D, listing of the candidates who made the final round of consideration and a summary of each candidate. E, listing of who interviewed the candidates. F, rationale for the selection of the recommended hire. G, any other information that is pertinent to the board's deliberation or decision to approve the hire. And H, the communication plan for after the hiring is finalized. Any comments on that? Similarly related to the first topic, so unless there are new comments, I'm not seeing any. Commissioner Curry?
Just that one I already mentioned, you got that.
Just the one she already mentioned. Point taken. Okay, we'll move on to page two. Recommending an Add to Section 2.4 Under Planning and Budgeting, a new Policy 2.4B. The superintendent shall not fail to regularly and timely, one, disclose and educate the board on the current budget. Two, provide the board with actual financials as compared to previously budgeted amounts for any concluded fiscal year. And three, provide the board, on an ongoing basis during budget planning season, October to January, with as much detailed budget information as reasonably practicable to enable the board, X, to fully and authentically understand the budget, its categories and details, and Y, to identify trends over time, and Z, to make fully informed decisions regarding a proposed or recommended budget or budget options. Let's take that block. Anyone have any comments, thoughts? Commissioner Curry?
Thank you. I just have a few technical points to make and then an overall recommendation. So the current budget just gets set once, and then it's voted on, and that's the budget. What we want to know, and actually, we already see the data on the current actual to-budget variance. So every month, we see a report that has the actual spending compared to the budgeted amount. But the, the budget doesn't change unless, under our policies, there's a $10,000 difference in a line item. So that's just the first point. And then, overall, I just, I think it'd be helpful, I don't know if Nathan support, worked with you on this or not, I found some of it confusing. But overall, to me, this read like what, everything you would want to see in a monitoring report, as well as the monthly financial reports. So I was confused why this is being introduced as a, within the policies, because this kind of, for me, defines what the monitoring report should look like. It has, it fills in that blank canvas that was, is here for many policies and was here when you all got here, that the previous board did not fill in a lot of monitoring report details. So it seems to me this is a great way to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Any other comments on this one? Superintendent Obang?
Yeah, just, just trying to.
Yeah, just trying to figure this one out in terms of the specific areas the board is looking for beyond what in, most of what you've kind of recorded here. Sounds like more something that fits under 2.8, like communication to the board, rather than, I'm not sure what different we would do in the budget process or plan, but it sounds more things around communication to the board. So I would say maybe take a look at that section. But it may parallel, but I mean, you have to sort of define exactly what it is that's missing that you want to see and then place in the appropriate spot.
Thank you Superintendent Obang. I see, we've put it under, or proposed to put it under Policy 2.4, which is Planning and Budgeting. I'm not opposed to considering, or having the committee consider, whether it ought to go under 2.8, Communication and Support to the Board. At this moment, I'm indifferent as to where you stick it. I'm more interested in the substance of it. And I don't want to belabor the point, but where did this policy come from and what is it asking for? Let me see if I can just broadly recap. This policy, embedded in this policy is, I believe, at least the committee's, if not the full board's, desire to, number one, have more disclosure and education with regard to our budget. So it's education and disclosure from the superintendent and his staff to the board. We want to feel more educated. We want to understand the budget down to the brass tacks if possible. And again, don't, don't, don't give me a hard time on the word brass tacks. I don't mean, we have to understand every pencil and every piece of paper. I don't mean that at all. And then number two, we would like actual versus budgeted. And just to answer Commissioner Curry, I think what you're referring to, Commissioner Curry, is the financial document that Director of Finance, Lavery, gives us each month. And then he highlights which areas to look out for. That is a nice high level, and I would personally commend him for that. But it's not the budget to actual that I have seen being on other boards and commissions. I'm looking for.
So it's more detail.
Yes, more detail. Where are we off? And, you know, maybe if there are, and if Commissioner, Commissioner Lavery, he hopes not. He hopes not. Director Lavery wanted to even just boil it down to something more condensed than the entire line item budget and how we're doing on each category. We would, I would accept that. But something actual to budget on a regular basis, or at least at the conclusion of the fiscal year. And then three, during the budget planning season, we just want more information on the budget and its buckets, its categories, to fully understand it so that we know what we're approving. And that came from, at least in my own personal experience, the super and Nathan did a great job last year. It was January 31st or 23rd when we passed the budget. But as of that date, the board had not yet seen anything akin to the actual budget. It was just slideshows. And so I felt a little uncomfortable approving based just on the slideshows. But I believed in you, and I still do. And so that was okay for me, but I think there's improvement to be had. And so anyway, I don't want to belabor it, but that's where it comes from. You asked for more context, Superintendent Obang?
Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate it. And I think that's what we need, actually. So I'm comfortable if you keep it in that category in terms of 2.0 under the Planning and Budgeting, as long as it's clear and specific. And I think we just need to keep having the conversation to really find out exactly. The goal of these policies is not for the superintendent to have latitude, but to be able to deliver to the board the information it needs in order to exercise its oversight. So not only do I, I don't want latitude, I want some clarity so I can give you the information. So that's why I need to kind of ask these questions. And that's why I sort of, I want to engage in more conversations so we can kind of figure out, what is it really you're trying to get at?
Exactly.
In terms of doing that. So with that understanding, yeah, I'm okay if it's under the 2.4, because it's under the budgeting piece, just as long as we're all clear on exactly what it is that you're expecting, then I can hit the mark.
Appreciate that. Okay, moving on to the next section. Commissioner Curry?
So once again, not to belabor the point, but again, my understanding of policy governance tools is that we create a broad policy goal, like the superintendent shall not fail to allow the board to remain uneducated about the budget or something like that. And then this is the report with all the information we want that tells the staff and the superintendent everything we want to know that constitutes that education of us. But this language is not a policy. This language is like systems and procedures for us to, you know, dictate at a certain level, which is fine. I'm saying like, you know, this is our limitation, is we want all this. But the policy is, we want to be educated and understand the budget at a deeper level or something like that. So I just want to keep that distinction going so that we're not starting, I think it's very common for organizations to mix up policies versus procedures.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Fisher?
I hear you, Commissioner Curry. And I keep going back to Yao has said a couple of times, just tell me what you want, right? And so we're struggling with giving him the what and letting him figure out the how, right? I always talk about that at work. Tell me what you want, and then we'll figure out how. But I think we're comfortable in saying, here's exactly what we want. And that way, it's clear for superintendent and his staff, may not fit the best practices in policy governance, but it's clear. And I think especially now, we want, there's certain things that we're looking for to operate. I acknowledge it's not best practice.
Okay.
But you can still get what we want, using right tools.
Got it. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Curry. We'll move on to the next.
I just want to interject, that's a really good point in terms of, I agree with you because you put it me so. But I do think that our consultant, Michael Healy, can also help us in framing some language and also looking at different tools we can use to get exactly what we want. Because this is just the beginning, right? Like Commissioner Wick also said, that now that it's an ongoing process, right? You started out with this, you look at it, you refine it, you say, hmm, that's not just right. And we have to have the continuous conversation. So that's what I'm just encouraging, that we tap into any resources that we have to help us streamline it so we can be as efficient as possible.
Thank you Superintendent Obang. Moving to the middle of page two. Add to Policy 2.5, Asset Protection. And I quote, and this has to do with, sorry, 2.5. I'll read the preface. The superintendent shall not, and then the new addition is number 11. Initiate any legal action on behalf of the board without the express written board approval. Let me read that one more time. Initiate any legal action on behalf of the board without express written board approval. Any comments, or can we move on? Okay. Oh, Superintendent?
I think that's one of those areas that's really something you want to frame as information to the board, because there are so many different types of legal parameters that happen on a daily basis. And I think the board would want to be informed, but you might want some parameters around what you want to be informed about. And sometimes, because it's time sensitive, we may need to take an action, and we may not have the entire board to come together to make a cent on something to move forward. So yeah, we'll think about that a little bit.
Superintendent Fisher? Excuse me. Commissioner Fisher?
I think I got promoted. Did I get, is that a promotion? Is that a demotion?
Commissioner Obang.
So I actually put this forward, and we changed it a couple of times. I was thinking along the same lines as you, Superintendent Obang. And this is not initiate any legal action, it's any legal action on behalf of the board. So if the board's name is going to be on it, I think it's appropriate that the board signs off and not the chair, right? The chair doesn't act on behalf of the board. The authority is the whole board voting. Does that change it?
If that helps, I would still want some opportunities to have conversations with my business services department as well as human resources to kind of figure that out. Because I know there are some logistical things that happen all the time that we do on behalf of the board. And just to, but once again, you're right, I do get to interpret that as well, too, so.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Policy 3.0, Board Management Delegation. Recommending deletion of 3.0, which read, "The board's sole connection to the district, its achievements, and its conduct will be through the superintendent of schools." The new sentence, recommended addition, is, "With the exception of the board's mandatory duties as prescribed by city charter and state law, and except as necessary to carry out the board's committee work, and except as otherwise permitted elsewhere in these policies, the board's operational connection to the district and its conduct will be through the superintendent." Any discussion? I'm going to move kind of quickly, so seeing none, going once, going to Superintendent?
I'm just wondering if, just in the interest of time, because I do have comments about everything, how we could best do this in terms of suggestions we may, we may have. Because one of the things I'm, in this particular, in this particular one here, we're talking about access to staff below the superintendent. And the challenge, one of the challenges for the, for us, the district, in terms of meeting all our other expectations, it makes it hard for me to hold those staff accountable based on their workload if now they're divided in terms of their workload to something else. And if we decide to say 20% of your job is to support this committee or what that committee is, does that mean that they're not available to do other? So I don't know, there's more conversations there. I mean, I don't want to slow the process down, I'm just wondering.
I agree. I think Superintendent, there's a policy embedded somewhere in your comments that we're going to have to work out, because we don't want to overburden your staff. But when we reinstated committees, I think we reinstated the concept that there are certain staff members that are associated with certain committees. But we want to be delicate. We don't want to overtax the system. We don't want to create chaos. So I agree with you, and we're going to have to work on that. And this should be an iterative process. And I will be the first to say on behalf of the board that certainly if we get a policy wrong and it just doesn't work out, bring it up. We'll be the first to admit our mistake and amend it. It's actually pretty easy to amend policies. Okay, if that's okay, we'll move on to the next. This is, and we're moving pretty quickly here. So Policy 3.1, Unity of Control. We're recommending a deletion that has to do with, well, I'll just read it. And we're reinstating it in a different life and a different section. So we're recommending the deletion of 3.1 sub 2. The following language to be deleted. "In the case of board members or committees requesting information or assistance without board authorization, the super can refuse such requests that require, in the super's opinion, a material amount of staff time or funds or is disruptive." Let's just hold on that one, because you'll see where it comes back in a slightly different form. So I'm going to move on to Add to Policy 3.4, Monitoring Superintendent Performance. I'm in the middle of page three, for those of you who are following along. Policy 3.4 sub 6, this is new. "Nothing in these policies shall preclude the board from setting district priorities and superintendent goals from time to time, ideally not less frequently than annually. Such priorities and goals should be set in such a way as to be measurable to the extent reasonably practical under the circumstances. In addition to the methods of monitoring superintendent job performance outlined in existing Policy 3.4, 1 through 5, the board also may monitor superintendent job performance by determining the degree to which the superintendent has achieved the board's district priorities and superintendent's goals, measured over a reasonable amount of time." Anyone want to comment on that one? Superintendent Obang?
I'll make, anything I would say, because it goes into personnel that I would want the board to review that and ensure that it's in line with the, with the personal services contract of the superintendent.
Meaning the contract between yourself and the board with respect to evaluation.
Right.
I have reviewed it.
Okay.
It is in compliance, and I will show you the language in your evaluation section of the contract. At least that's my opinion, and we can talk about it. But you're right, it's got to be consistent with your contract. If it's not, it's not a good policy to make. Agreed. Fisher, Commissioner Fisher?
Just a comment, just thinking about how we're working tonight. Perhaps you think about the process for evaluating new policies. Always give the opportunity to the superintendent to weigh in before we bring it to the board. Because there's a lot, he's got a lot of input, and it impacts him and his staff a lot. It's not so efficient to do it.
So one of the things I know, the chair and I have had this conversation that I think would be, might be a good process. If the Policy Governance Committee identifies a calendar of specific policies, then we'd be happy to, I'd be happy to bring the appropriate staff for that particular topic, like you had one around budgeting. So I would bring maybe the business. And we could have some conversations and get some understanding before it gets to here. I think that would be helpful in terms of getting it right before it comes here. So something for you to think about.
Absolutely. I mean, we as a policy, I'm sorry, we as a committee have been talking about what is the right process. And admittedly, this committee and all others were just reinstated in June. So we're all new and we're learning. And I absolutely agree with Commissioner Fisher that a part of the process, once we have a set of policies that we want to send for first reading, we should give the superintendent, at least at that point, an opportunity to review and then respond in writing with a memo. And then if we deem that we need to take it back into committee and make some adjustments before we bring it out to first reading, I completely agree.
I do like Commissioner Fisher's suggestion. I think a more collaborative process would be to start the conversation. And I think, because there's a number of topics here that involve not just me, but other staff that are going to be impacted. And I would love the opportunity to say, okay, what is it you're trying to achieve? And have the conversation with the committee, and then the committee can form its dialogue based on the conversations before we come and share with the board. I think that would be helpful, because, you know, yeah, I don't want to waste the board's time responding to each and every.
Right, we're learning. We're learning. I appreciate it. Let's get a new face here. Commissioner Pillsbury, you're on.
No, I'm going to wait.
Okay. Commissioner Curry?
Sorry, I missed the focus. So if you were to talk with Winuski or those board members who use policy governance at Essex, they would tell you that the monitoring reports are the superintendent's evaluation every month. And that the goal there is to, for the board to be explicit after a superintendent interprets the policy and reports to the board along the lines of any instructions given for the report and metrics. And anything missing is the opportunity to state to the superintendent, this is not acceptable to us. We needed more from you, and so we're going to let you know that. And next year, when you come back, or please come back next month with this report and give us more information. And the calendar is a guide for the board to track the information it gets so that when there is an annual evaluation, there is a ton of documentation. And so I just wanted to point out that Winuski has achieved a level of proficiency with policy governance and that they are always happy to come and talk maybe with your committee about how that works in an ideal world, when we do develop greater proficiency, if that is what our goal is.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Those are wise words. Next, Add to Policy, unless there was, no, okay. Add to Policy 4.2, Board Job Description. This is just the catch-all that our committee felt was missing from the initial policy governance draft that this board adopted in March of 2017. Number five, quote, "In addition, the board's job description includes the exercise of all the board's statutory rights, duties, and obligations as required or allowed by city charter and state law." Okay, I'm going to move on to page four of six. Now, this is called Amend Policy 4.4, Board Officers and Their Methods of Selection. I would like to confer briefly with Commissioner Fisher, one of the sponsors of this rather lengthy. In other words, I'm not looking forward to reading this whole thing. And given time, we can suggest that we waive the reading and move on, assuming you've all read it. But I will defer to Commissioner Fisher if he'd like to explain it or read it.
Yeah, I'll give a quick summary. This came out of our organizational meeting in April, seems like so long ago. Just some things I noticed, and I brought this forward in, I think, May or something. But essentially, codifying some of the things that we were told around that organizational meeting, making sure that everybody is elected by roll call, not by secret ballot, making sure the clerk is an elected official, which we found out was in statute. And then something important is the ability to remove an officer, that the board can remove an officer, so it wasn't in there before. Or if there's a vacancy. I think those are the big updates.
Okay, any comments on that one?
Just a question about a rule of officers, could be done sort of, uh, some legislative or legal sort of, uh...
I did...
...negotiation around that one?
Yeah, I didn't talk to Joe McNeil about it, I did do some research and couldn't find anything in the charter, uh, in the city charter, but I'll go back to Joe.
Yeah, I think there might be some complications around there, because they are elected officials.
Well, we're, just to be clear, we're not, we're not proposing that a school board member would be removed from his or her office as school board member, just from his or her office as chair, vice chair.
Oh, the executive chair, right.
Yes.
Okay, that you can do, go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
I would actually request that this whole section be reviewed by Joe, it has not already, because I believe that, um, we cannot amend the city charter, and so, electing a chair, I mean, a clerk, um, could be amending the city charter.
If it gives you any comfort, Commissioner Curry, I checked personally with Joe McNeil on whether the clerk is appointed or elected, he found a provision in state law that said the clerk is an elected, um, not appointed position.
But does that mean that state law trumps the city charter just in that one portion?
Why don't I just, uh, walk back what I said, and I will get, we'll get a blessing from Joe on this whole section?
Yeah, I mean, I think this whole section could be, should be reviewed, because there are so many city charter provisions.
Agreed.
Thank you.
No problem. Commissioner Fisher, anything more on four dot four, or shall we move on? All right, moving on, we are almost through, thank you for your patience, everyone. We're on page, are we already on page six, the final page? Excellent. Amend policy four dot six, board committee principles. Briefly, what's behind this is, once we reinstated committees, as Michael Healy said, we absolutely have a right to do, under policy governance, um, we needed to amend this section, uh, because it was no longer consistent with, um, our desire to have standing committees. So, I will not, um, read four dot six, you can look at it yourself, or maybe I will, but it's short. It says, "Board committees, when used, will be used to help the board accomplish its work." And then, the following language that remains is, "In the event the board creates a committee, committee expectations and authority will be clearly stated to make sure they do not conflict with authority delegated to the super." And finally, "The committees will not have the power to act for the board, but will make recommendations to the board. Committee recommendations and reports will become an official part of Board minutes." Any deliberation on this one? Seeing none, we'll move on to the final, uh, bottom half of page six. This is a new section five to policy governance, called overarching policies. And, um, not to be contrary with anyone here, but I do believe that this does not mean we're overriding policy governance, this is entirely consistent with the flavor of policy governance, uh, should we choose to adopt this, that the Burlington School, that is right for the Burlington School Board. So, here, here goes. A new section five is added to the policies as follows. Policy five dot one, nothing in these policies shall limit or prohibit the board from exercising the board's authority, right, and duties under applicable law, including without limitation the board's right to take direct action by resolution, consistent with Robert's Rules of Order and the board's enabling legislation, found in Articles fifty-seven through sixty, inclusive of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Any policy that attempts to limit or prohibit the board from exercising its statutory authority, rights, or duties is invalid and unenforceable. Next, policy five dot two, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in these policies, board members may make requests for information or documents from the superintendent, and committee chairs may make such requests directly to that committee's assigned staff member. The superintendent shall reasonably and timely comply with such requests unless the superintendent reasonably believes the request to be unduly burdensome, unreasonable, or inappropriate, in which case, the superintendent shall refer such requests to the board chair, who shall determine whether such request is unduly burdensome, unreasonable, or inappropriate. In the event the board chair determines such information request to be unduly burdensome, unreasonable, or inappropriate, nothing shall preclude the requesting board member from making a public records request under applicable law, as if such board member were a member of the general public. And finally, policy five dot three, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in these policies, board members may communicate directly with school district employees. Any comments on proposed new section five? Superintendent Obang?
Yeah, so just, um, I said, I'll say it again, the section five goes beyond the policy governance framework, um, in terms of adding a fifth, um, element, there are the four sections in policy governance. I think a lot of what you've got, you have there probably can be embedded in other sections, and some of it actually sounds like a preamble to our policies, to our policies, that you could, um, that would probably come forward. And five point three, I think, um, is contradictory to some of the other policy statements that we currently have in terms of, uh, access to, uh, employees, um, so I'd want to kind of, uh, think about that and, and talk a little bit more about how, um, you achieve what it is that you're trying to achieve in, in that section there.
Thank you, Superintendent Obang, I appreciate those comments. Commissioner Gulick? Oh, Commissioner Fisher?
I, I think that last line is super important, because we've heard various things about what we should, who we shouldn't, shouldn't be talking about, and so, however you can work that language, I think it's really important for me as a board member, that you are not my sole connection to the entire school district, that I can talk to other staff members in the district and get their perspective. It's super important to me.
Commissioner Gulick?
I wanted to make a friendly correction on something that was said earlier, so the Essex School District is now a merged district, um, so it was Essex Town and Essex Junction that merged. One district was a policy governance district, and the other was not, and so they are actually in the process of completely overhauling their policies, and so, to point to them as a policy governance example at this point isn't, isn't accurate. Um, I also just wanted to thank the policy governance committee, I think your work was excellent, is excellent. To me, policies are part of a living document that should change, that should, um, you know, be amendable, and I believe that most of what we have fleshed out a little bit tonight will help me do my job, um, it's gonna give me more access to information, and I'm ultimately accountable to the voters in Burlington, I feel this is gonna help me, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gulick. Any other comments? Commissioner Curry?
Um, I just wanna clarify my statement about Essex, I was, I specifically said, talk to people who were involved in policy governance, because I know that they have merged and are changing, so that it was just the experience of those who had, um, been using the tools for a number of years with regards to that monthly evaluation of the superintendent opportunity.
Okay, so now it is time to, uh, vote on advancing this set of proposed policies to next meeting, second reading, at which point we will be voting, uh, to pass or not to pass some or all of them. But at this time, I would like to, uh, ask for a roll call vote, um, to the question on the table, which is, shall we advance these policies for a second reading next month? And if I may, I'll start with, and Chair, well, Commissioner Pillsbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Gulick?
Yes. I'm sorry, I've been sick.
Commissioner Curry?
I believe there's actually a state statute that governs policies developed by school boards that requires two readings, so I'm not sure why we're taking a roll call, 'cause we're actually required to do this.
Thank you. Was that an abstention?
No, it was just stating a, um, a lack of a need for a roll call, I mean, I'm not gonna violate state statute, so...
Okay.
I would think anybody who votes no is in violation of that statute, so I'm not really sure why we're taking a vote on something that's required.
Well, I suppose if the majority of us didn't like what was just presented, we could kill it now.
Well, we're, we're, um, I guess you put a motion on the floor that violates state, like, gives people the option of, you're giving people the option of voting no to go to second reading, but because you introduced first reading, like, the second reading could then negate a lot of stuff, but you introduced a first reading, and so that, there's an expectation that it goes to second reading, because there's a statute that governs that.
I'll tell you what, if you're not gonna object, then I will convert the motion on the table to a straw vote, and we'll just do it by yea or nay, and we're not gonna do a roll call. If anyone, does anyone, all in favor?
If you were to rephrase your, um, like, what you're bringing to... Yeah, um, into a, like, a motion to close the conversation and, um, continue it at next meeting, would that then appease both of your standpoints? Because it would be closing the conversation tonight and continuing it at the next meeting, but then also not, like, if people say no, then it, it just seemed to bridge both concerns.
I like that, Commissioner Gentlemen, and Commissioner Curry's approval, what I'd like to do is just get a general feeling as to whether these ought to proceed, and I think we got it, but can we just indulge me for a moment and say straw vote, not binding? All those in favor of moving this set onto a second reading, and therefore a vote to approve, um, next meeting, say aye?
Aye.
All of, any opposed? Seeing none, okay. Thank you, Chair Wolf, I apologize for the length of time this took.
Moving on to, uh, board deliberation, uh, six, item, uh, no, seven, committee reports, excuse me. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee Reports. That's been moved, if when we modified the agenda. It's gonna be under the superintendent's report. So, we're moving on to committee reports.
A week from this evening.
Thank you. Next, curriculum personnel, Commissioner Curry?
Well, I apologize for not, for not getting the minutes out, I thought I had sent them five days ago, but apparently they weren't, so I actually have old-school, hard copies here for you to look at. I don't know if they've been updated or not, but, um, we had a great meeting, we talked about reading skills and how they're developed in the elementary schools, and we, and we had a guest speaker, uh, who was promoting the Wharton-Gillingham approach, which seems to be very successful. Fourteen teachers in the district have taken it, and, um, they're, in one case, it has transformed her, uh, approach to teaching reading in Edmonds Elementary. And, um, she was very enthusiastic about, uh, promoting that throughout the district, and we hope as a committee to recommend that that be available to more teachers in the district, more than the fourteen who've already been trained. And then Stephanie talked about, um, the, the different, uh, ways that reading is taught in the district right now, so we have a variety of approaches, and we recommend that those, that the variety be, uh, continued, um, that teachers work with the systems that they are, feel most comfortable with, and that they perhaps will incorporate the Wharton-Gillingham after, um, training that hopefully, more training that will hopefully occur this year. That's in a nutshell.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, facilities and finance, Commissioner Pillsbury?
And myself, our co-chairs of, of facilities and finance, we have had two official meetings with the Director of Facilities, and, um, we've had, um, uh, we've had really extensive learning about the ten-year capital plan, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna have the Director of Facilities, Marty Spalding, talk about what we came up to, a sort of a recommend, sort of, information we wanted to give to the board as a result of our meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury, welcome. Marty?
Do you want this one? Good evening. So, um, as Keith mentioned, we've had, we've had two official meetings, we actually met three times, but the first meeting wasn't a, a warned meeting, so, um, um, here's just a quick overview of the work that we've been doing as a committee, and some recommendations moving forward, so, here's a recap of our, of our ongoing capital budget. Some of the goals and responsibilities of the committee, uh, we're meeting on a, a bi-monthly basis, uh, the committee is, um, continuously monitoring the progress of all capital projects. The goal of the committee is to present all future projects to the full board, um, we will be discussing later this evening, uh, the committee is going to support a preschool visioning committee, um, other goals of the committee is to seek, another huge driver in us moving forward with other capital projects, um, throughout the districts, is identifying swing space so that we can do work in our buildings that's going to take longer than the summer months that we have, so, uh, another, uh, key goal of the committee is to seek out additional swing space available for us to do this work, uh, and that's gonna be ongoing. So, also to set out a timeline for capital projects, uh, and ensure that each school community is fully informed, and seek out, um, seek projections for future enrollments, and track all costs so that we don't have, uh, cost, cost overruns for all the projects, ongoing projects. So, the recommendations for our next, um, construction season, starting next summer, from the FFNI committee, is to continue the work that we're currently doing on the Edmonds project, to, uh, complete that Edmonds C building work that we're doing. We're going to propose to do a Edmonds Phase Two site improvements to gain access, um, to that C building, which I'm gonna briefly discuss, uh, later in the presentation. We're proposing to do a sprinkler upgrade at the Integrated Arts Academy, as well as some, some paving at, uh, Hunt Elementary School, and some, some upgrades to the sidewalks on that site. So, here's just a quick recap of the project that we're currently doing at Edmonds, um, that project is, uh, timeline, uh, is to take place until roughly the, the end of next summer, um, the overall project cost is four point eight million dollars, um, what I can tell you is we're, we're, you know, currently on budget, things are, are moving smoothly with that project. Here's, uh, go ahead to the next slide, just an example of some of the work that's happening in the basement, so not a whole lot of transforming, uh, of that space yet, but the, the last picture that I, the last update that I showed you, we still had a dirt floor down there, and we now actually today have some studded walls, so, things are moving ahead. Much more significant work on the site, with a lot of concrete work, um, that's the new loading dock area and, or, and, um, outside seating area that will be outside of that cafeteria. So, we have completed the work in the Maker space, though this, if you haven't had the opportunity to go out to the Edmonds Middle School Library to see the new transformed Maker space, um, it looks fantastic. Here's, uh, some, couple shots of, of, um, the work that was, the extensive work that was done by the staff, um, from, from the school to get that space put back together and operational for the, for the students, and they actually, if you go to the space, they have a display on, in the, in the lobby area of the transformation of, of all of the work that took place, uh, in, in the space throughout the summer, and how they're currently using it with, with the students now. So, here's kind of a, an overview of the work that we'll be proposing to do on the, the site at Edmonds for our Phase Two. The biggest change is the plans that you previously saw where we had a, a new proposed drive, parallel to Main Street, we're, we're proposing not to do that drive and continue to utilize the current horseshoe. What we're trying to achieve here is this, this is our C building, which is, um, centralized between the elementary school and the middle school, and we wanna utilize this entrance as our primary entrance, uh, our primary visitor entrance throughout the day, um, and currently, there's a, a large stairwell, uh, and we need to make that entrance handicap accessible, so we need to bring the grade right up to the front door, and we need to provide parking for visitors, uh, to meet ADA compliance, so, the new parking area for visitors would be here, we need to bring that grade up to, to gain access to meet ADA compliance from where those, those, um, people would be parking to the front door, actually be able to drop students off on Main Street and also gain access, uh, without going up any, any stairs directly here, so, th- those upgrades are mostly in, in sidewalk and, and, changing of the grades. So, we'll, we'll flush out those paint plans as we, as we move forward, uh, through the design development, that'll take the next couple of months. So, our next steps are to, uh, design, uh, in... So our next steps are to design and refine those designs with our architects and engineers, as well as ensure that each school's community is fully informed of the work that is planned and for their school and the possible impact on their students seeking feedback before the plans are finalized. And then we'll obviously have the same permit requirements to follow through as we move forward with those proposed projects. And that's pretty much.
Great. Thank you, Marty.
Yep.
Anything else, Commissioner Pillsbury?
What I wanted to say is thank Marty for, basically, he did have a meeting. It just for us to figure out what we're doing and getting information. And then we had our official meetings, and what, this is every two weeks. It's a very involved learning, but we're trying to do the best we can to keep you up informed. I think the most important thing is that we have tried to bring back a project that could be worked on next summer that will give us the accessibility, and at the same time have projects that will not require students to be moved while we're working on the preschool topics or task force. But we need to also be aware that this $39 million project is very involved and is going to have some significant impact on students and many of the schools. In other words, they will have to be moved out of those schools in order for us to do the heating and ventilation projects. And I think that's something that we really learned, and I think it's something the community, why we're going around to the schools, let them know that we're, for the next 10 years, various schools are going to have some real impact upon the students. We'll do the best we can to make sure they have a good learning environment, but we have significant work to do on these old school buildings.
And so the presentation tonight showing the Edmonds Phase Two site improvements, the facility committee, then, is there any discussion by commissioners about this, making the Edmonds campus handicap accessible? Commissioner Avantick?
I just have a question about the visitor parking at Edmonds. Is that going to, is that going to, it's one slide up, or no?
Oh, it's one more slide up.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Isn't it going to block access for the children to get to the playground?
There will be the same access to the playground. They will not be blocking it, but there is a need for future improvements to provide accessible access to that playground. This will not incorporate those changes, but...
Okay. So their playground's not accessible?
Will be the same as they currently have.
Okay.
Good question. And Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Marty. I like this design, and I appreciate that you've heard the feedback from the community around access. Have you shared this with the either Edmonds Elementary or Middle School communities yet?
No. The same if a person.
Yep. So that'll be the facilities' next step?
That's our goal. One of our goals.
Yep. Great. Good question. Yep. All right. Anything else? We'll move on to Committee, Community Engagement Committee. Commissioner Golick?
We don't have much to report because we didn't have an October meeting, but we have been doing work behind the scenes that we will present to you a little bit later.
Great. Next would be Policy Governance, Commissioner Wick.
I don't have anything else to report. Thank you, Chair Wool.
Thank you. Then next on the agenda will be the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Chair Wool. First item is Budget Timeline. So it's, once again, it's that time of year, we start talking about planning for our budget and ramping up the, all the different exercises we need to do to get to March. And I have with me Executive Director Labrie to share the initial timelines.
Hopefully folks can see from a distance, but it is up on Board Docs at this time, the document that's up on the screen here, which is the FY20 Budget Development Timeline. This timeline will look somewhat familiar to those who paid attention to our timeline last year, but there's a few important changes in addition to simply updating, obviously, the dates to reflect a new year. One of the things I wanted to point out coming right up, and we've already begun publicity, are our kind of opening community budget forums. And last year, if you recall, we tried to expand access to those forums by adding a forum for, specifically focused on special education families. And also, we added a couple, a forum last year that was targeting new American and English speakers for whom English is not their primary language. And so this year, we've shifted it slightly based on our experience last year, and we're actually going to have two forums. One forum is going to be specifically focused on supporting Vietnamese speakers and a separate forum focused on supporting Somali and Mymai speakers. Based on our experience last year and the work that broadly speaking, engaging these communities, we felt like it's more effective to be able to focus on one kind of, or kind of language family in this case, to kind of provide more concrete support there, as opposed to having a situation where we have to have multilingual liaisons in, kind of coordinating them through a lot of different languages at the same time. It just, we felt like this might allow for better participation. One of the obvious kind of items that might be seen as missing from this is Nepali speakers. They have actually, they have a regular meeting that they've already had this month, and its focus wasn't on budget, but rather than reconvene those folks again, they're going to be called with a... They have a chance to participate as well without asking them to kind of come out and come to another, another meeting. So those folks do have, that's obviously a major portion of our, of our population, and we didn't want to, I probably could add something to that, but it's not really a timeline thing, although it will be happening. Okay. Those are the public meetings. Also, our 14th, next week is the kind of more generally focused forum. That's going to be at Integrated Arts Academy. So for folks who are in the neighborhood and want to show up, certainly Board members are welcome at any of these meetings. Also coming up next week is the launch of our online budget survey tool, which we used last year, and in conjunction with that, we're going to be updating the website. Right now, it kind of still reflects the process from last year, so we kind of need to bump all that old information down into the archive, so to speak, and kind of clean up the page so that we can draw people's attention to the new information, of which this budget timeline will obviously be a part. Let's see, a couple other highlights from here. You can see also toward the end of next week, we're going to be, we've asked the principals and directors and our student board members to provide the budget input that they have been able to solicit from staff and obviously from the, in the student's case, from the other, from other students. So that's, again, kind of all part of the information gathering process that we're trying to do, bring all of that stuff together, review it, in particular with alignment for, with our strategic plan, with focus on the achievement gap. And then we really start putting the numbers together in November so that come December, we're actually able to present something. It's, as you know, it still remains fluid even during December. We don't always have all of the variables that we need to go into details like tax estimates and that sort of thing, but by and large, we can, we can start to really put a finer focus on what the major drivers are of cost changes, whether or not there are any ideas that we want to pursue to reduce spending in some areas, as well as add services. And at that time, we also will be providing an update on the audit, which we may actually be able to provide that next month, but at a minimum, in December, it'll definitely be there. I actually think we're probably going to be equipped to provide that a little bit earlier at the November meeting. And let's see, I guess the last thing to really point out as a reminder is, we are required to bring the budget to the City Council. That doesn't mean that the City Council gets to vote on it or that they get to kind of dictate anything to you. It's just that we have to present it to them, and so we've tentatively looked at their schedule and said that would probably make sense to do January 7th, so that then the Board, the school Board's regular meeting thereafter could, could proceed with the benefit of any input that we have from, from the City Council. We've also gone ahead and just shown January 15th as a tentative date for a special board meeting in January, should it become necessary. We've had years in the past where there have been legislative changes that have come, kind of, they've evolved, but we've kind of gotten wind of some things that have happened pretty late in the game, and so we wanted to just make clear to folks, you know, as you're looking ahead and planning on your calendars, that it may well be necessary to take that extra time, whether it's to further your own deliberations or because there is information that either wasn't available or became newly available, kind of without enough time to consider it on the, at the January 8th meeting. So with that, town meeting day, August, March 5th, sorry. And yeah, I'll take any questions on the timeline.
Commissioner Wool?
I would, we have a Google Calendar, and it would be great if you could put some of these dates on there, or all of them.
Uh...
The Board.
Who's we?
The Board.
The Board's calendar? Okay, yeah. You're welcome. This is public information, so go ahead and put it on there or whatever you want to do with it.
Great.
So I guess Director Labrie, how has this been publicized?
This calendar?
Yeah.
This whole timeline is being unveiled tonight. I mean, obviously, there are elements of it, some of the work that's already underway. There's also publicity that's already started for the forums, but this hasn't been, like, shared broadly before the board.
Okay. So one of those is in a week, right? So is...
Next week, three of them.
Are you working with Russ to make sure that this gets out in all the great ways?
Yep, exactly. So folks may have, there's a few different, if folks are on, like, the Facebook page, for example, you may have seen that the special ed meeting and the kind of forum, the kind of general forum, next week's already up there. We're going to be going through kind of the usual channels. We're also talking about doing the Connect Five call. I actually don't know if it's called Connect Five anymore, but the Call Home to people. Sorry about that, Russ. And the, in the case of the forums targeting our new American families, those folks have already been contacted directly through the multilingual liaison, so in some ways, that one's probably the furthest ahead in, and it tends to be more effective for us to reach out to them in a targeted way, rather than just through kind of broader communications that are less accessible.
Commissioner Wool, I have the same question, and I don't know if you're planning to list them on the website, because none of these are listed on the website yet.
Yep, yeah, we'll put it up on, all up on the website as well.
Commissioner Carey?
Just a quick question about the location beings. Are they all, are they all at IAA or no?
Good question. Let's see. Let me just access my personal calendar where they do reside, and so I don't mistake anything here and confuse people. Standby.
IAA's, the budget forum?
Right. So, so next Monday, the 15th, that's the Vietnamese speakers forum, that's at Hunt, 6:00 to 7:30. Tuesday, 5:30 to 7:00, the special education meeting at Champlain. Wednesday, the Somali and Mymai budget meeting is at BHS, 6 o'clock. And Thursday is IAA at 6 o'clock. So we've kind of spread out through, through the district, so there'll be some traveling for those of you who are going to join me at all of these meetings.
Thank you. Thank you, Nate. Commissioner Curry?
I just wanted to make a suggestion for agendas during budget season. In the past, we've, when we have budget presentations by staff, we've asked that those go first before public comments so that people have a greater understanding of what they might be commenting on.
Thank you. And we will follow that. Great suggestion. Commissioner Avantick?
I guess I'm just wondering about the Somali-Mymai location, BHS. I think most of our Somali-Mymai population lives in the Old North End, so we might want to give them an opportunity to walk to these things?
Go ahead.
I guess I would respectfully say that we defer to Miriam on that one, and that was planned by Miriam, and I would trust that her and the liaisons would pick a location that was appropriate for that community to attend.
Thank you. That's great. Nathan?
That's, that's all I have.
Okay. And then just, are we on, you had said November for the actual, for the audit, excuse me?
Yeah, so we don't have, so what we've done in the past in the most kind of relevant part of the audit or for budgeting purposes is, well, first of all, just kind of a general sense of where did we end up last year, kind of, and then critically, what type of surplus funds are we going to have available to incorporate into the next year's budget? Whether spend on programming or capital, whatever it might be, you need to know how much that is so that you can decide what to do with it. So that is the part that I'm talking about having ready in November. The, kind of the full hundred-something page audit and all the notes and all that kind of stuff, that probably won't be ready until at least December, but the kind of critical, the budget critical information we'll have ready, and all those numbers will be, you know, pretty, pretty hard at that point, so we don't have to worry about some kind of change to them.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for preparing all these dates, and thank you, Russ. That's impressive, and I'm, I was appreciative last year as a public, member of the public to be able to witness the success of those, so thank you for initiating that again this year.
You're welcome.
Great. All right.
Okay, Mr. So, please, the next item is mandatory policies?
Yes.
Okay. So I do have a little bit of process, because I do want the Board to understand what's going to happen in the next, throughout the course of the year around these mandatory policies. This is going to fall over. One of the things I wanted to share with the Board is that we're obligated through Title 16 to update mandatory policies. And when we did the migration, I don't know, a year and a half ago, I guess, from all the Board policies that went to the policy, because we had about 144 policies that we had to park, and they were a sort of amalgamation of policies and procedures and kind of mixed all up. And so we've been doing over probably a year and a half a cleansing to sort of follow the legislative guidelines to bring forward the mandatory policies and to bring that to the Board in order to approve them and then post them on our website in order. So if you look at the chart that's posted there, it just gives you an idea of the categories. What are you doing?
Here?
No, no, no. Okay. Well, Russ is opening up, so you can...
I'm new.
That link, you can go to the link and it goes right to the legislative document that shows you where all the policies are, the state-level policies. And you can see the categories. So we're using the same sort of nomenclature and cataloging for our policies. So there's Board Operations, which is under As, everything under A. Personnel, Students, Instruction, School, Community Relations, Non-Instructional Operations. Now, these are all policies, so they're under the purview of the Board. We're doing the work for the Board in terms of preparing the policies and reviewing what we had previously and looking at legislation and make sure that we have the language is congruent with what has been stated at the state level. So those are the categories. So you'll see on our Board website these categories, and we'll be populating the policies once the Board approves them, we'll populate them under the appropriate category. Okay? Next slide. So I did, I already mentioned that we've been going through, with Exec Council going through these, and it is quite a bit of work because previously our policies were so convoluted with our procedures that it was hard to even follow and, you know, and to make sure we're in compliance with all of them. But this catalog, I think it'll help us to ensure. One of the things that we wanted to share with the Board under Title 16, Subchapter 563... 563, we're obligated to post the new policy at least 10 days before adoption. Our past practice has been at least 30 days, like usually it would come to the board, and then we'd post it, and then the next board meeting, the board would, would vote on it, and then it'd be posted. So I'm, I'm recommending to the Policy and Governance Committee to follow that same sort of process once they have these documents in its possession. Okay? Okay? So I wanted to, so we've got the first three that we're sharing this evening, and I know you have received them, so I'm not going to go through them in detail, but I thought it'd be fun. For a couple of them, I have staff who did some work on it, just give you a thumbnail. Some of them are things that you will never have anything to do with, and most of them are, and some of them will have some impact. So one, one of the first ones, under A1, the first policy from the legislation is conflict of interest. And hopefully you can take a look, look through that, and review that for yourselves. I won't go through that one, but that's, that's one that's really specific for the board, and kind of take a look at that piece. And I think that's the only one in the category, actually, so we'll be done the A's, so that's good. Okay? And then we move on to students, and student transportation, you can open that up now, Russ.
Nate? Sorry.
Thumbnail on the student transportation policy?
Right. Can I have the mic? Student transportation, this is by and large what was in place under the old policy regime. I think it's important to note, just for folks who might not be familiar with, that we transport students in a variety of ways, or I should say, we transport or support their transport in a variety of ways. Obviously, folks are familiar with the neighborhood special city buses, and the, while we don't have any sort of contractual relationship with the, what is now Green Mountain Transit, we do reimburse them for rides provided to our students. So that is obviously the largest component of our transportation program. But we also transport students in our own buses for students whose IEPs require them to have transportation, and also, that is particularly true at the preschool level. So just so folks have a sense of what's there. Beyond that, like I said, there's items in here, like the walking distances at various levels. Those are just, it's already been in place, so we haven't made any changes to any of that on a kind of substantive basis. I think that's it.
That's good. Okay, there's no need for debate tonight, because it's going to go to the policy governments. We just want to kind of show.
Russ?
A few more.
Can you scroll, just scroll down a little bit? I wanted to just to, just to, no, up, up, did we? Sorry. One of the things we've done, so we can differentiate between the mandatory policies and the procedures that we'll be developing, is we've changed the format. So you notice that all the mandatory policies will have, actually, mandatory policy on there, so we can see that. And then the category under the section that I showed you previously, the six sections from the, from the state, and then we've coded it C3 in a line with the state policy, so anyone can go on to the state policy and see it's aligned with ours. And then once we've identified the start date, we would take the recommendation, have an effective date, and I'll jump down to revision date. And I would recommend to the, to the policy governance, that they recommend a revision date of at least three or four years. That way, we have a cycle where we can actually just review all the policies, we can create a schedule for that. And then we've also added a cross-reference section there for people who are into that policy, if they want to look at other legislation, or other things that would relate to this particular policy. And if you can scroll down a little bit, there's an intent statement there. We put an intent statement, that's not in the legislative, but we wanted to kind of frame what the policy is about. And at the very bottom, Russ, you'll see on our documents, there's a supporting document section, so we've added that to add any other links, or any other resources that we think are related to that particular policy, to go forward. The other piece, I would say, that you'll see systemic in all the policies, is the last stanza there, says the superintendent shall include in his or her annual report, school board data regarding the students. Oh, no, not that one, sorry, move up. Uh, where is it? Okay, I don't see where it is, and I'll show them the next one anyway. So anyways, those are some of the, those are some of the consistent format we'll have in all the policies, so you can see that as we go forward. All right? And the last one, Stephanie, is a curriculum-related one, and for all you science lovers out there, this one is about animal dissection.
So this policy, Superintendent O'Bang said, speaks to animal dissection, and basically, we are required to have a policy that allows students to opt out of the actual participating in either a activity or an assessment that involves dissecting an animal, and we're required to provide them with an alternative. We also have to provide them with an alternative to get the information in another way, other than observation, so they're not required to either participate or observe any animal dissection that's happening. And we have to provide an alternative, whether that be something online, or another way to supplement the curriculum in that way.
Okay. Okay. Scroll down a little bit there. The, this one's pretty straightforward, so, okay. Um, that's it. And you can, you'll notice this one has a lot more reference in the supporting documents, because there's a lot of science data. So that is the information, and we recommend sending this to the Policy and Governance Committee to kind of review and look at. There is a statement in there, I was trying to glance to find it, but in each one of them, there's a statement that gives the direction to the, to the superintendent to develop any appropriate procedures, implement these policies. So that keeps the policy statement as a policy statement, and any procedures would follow after that. So with that, hand it over to you, Chair.
Great. Next would be superintendent's report, recommendation to endorse early education. Yep. Item C. No, Superintendent O'Bang first.
Thank you, Chair Wool. The, you know, over the last several months, we've had some conversations around what strategy we should apply to our early education needs, and I know that our board members have been having conversations in terms of what would be the best course of action, considering what our needs are in terms of moving forward. The, in conversation with Commissioner Gulick, and Chair Wool, and other commissioners, I really liked the progress that happened through the BHS re-envisioning campaign in the last year and a half, two years, maybe, something like that. And wanted to sort of have an approach that replicated that sort of community engagement process, in order to bring something forward, to support the board in making some decisions around that. So with that, I'm undertaking establishing a early education task force to support the board in its decision-making around that. And you'll see in this memo that's directed to the board, this task force will be an inclusive collaboration between multiple stakeholders, including our director of early ed, Stacy Curtis, representatives from social agencies, community members, and pre-K vendors. The task force should also include two, at least two members from the, from the board, with one member being the co-chair. And the task force will, will present recommendation reports to the superintendent, which will include an early education proposal that will meet the needs of Burlington pre-K population. This report will come to the superintendent by April 1st, 2019, which will give us an opportunity to work with the Finance and Facilities Committee in recommendations going forward for early education and pre-K. So I, I bring this forward as a recommendation to have this task force, and, and hope to have the board endorse this action going forward.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang.
And with that, based on our discussion and your recommendation, Commissioner Gulick, at this time, would you like to present the resolution?
Sure, I can present the resolution. I don't believe I need to read it, because I believe you've all read it. I, I want to thank Stephen and my, sorry, Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Curry, you all helped me with some editing, thank you very much. And also Chair Wool, Superintendent O'Bang, and Marty Spalding, who are all invested in the process, so thank you for that. But unless someone wants me to point anything specific out, I don't think I need to read it.
Commissioner Fisher? So I want to make sure which one we are approving, or we're voting on. So can we, is there a final version that we can at least?
Is it the one posted?
Is it the one posted on Board Docs?
Yes. Yes. Yep.
That's not the one on Board Docs.
This one is, uh?
This is the one on Board Docs. I just got this, there's two on Board Docs.
Under 6D.
Yep.
So under, under 6D, David?
Mm-hmm. 6D.
I'll second Commissioner Gulick's motion.
All those in favor?
Oh, any discussion?
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the resolution passes. Thank you, Commissioner Gulick, for presenting. Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang. Next, yep.
The next item is, really about questions around a number of things that have happened in recent days within our district. Ones, two topics, one's around communications to the media from staff, and I've had some conversations with board members, and I thought it would be sort of advantageous for us to just publicly state what our, what the directive is from the superintendent's chair. And the other item I would like to comment on is a situation that happened at the Hunt dance last week, and I know that communications has been sent out, and would love the opportunity for, to make a statement around that, and also give board members an opportunity to comment on that as well. But I'll turn to the first one, that I know that Commissioner Fisher had some commentary around that before I made any statements.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang. So, a few weeks ago, when news broke of the Vermont Agency of Education charging BHS Director of Guidance, Mario Matius, BHS principal Noel Green was quoted in the media, saying, quote, "Had seen nothing less than stellar work," unquote, and quote, "I do not have confidence in due process in regards to this situation," unquote. So just as a reminder to my fellow commissioners, and to the public watching, that personnel matters cannot be discussed in an open board meeting. However, myself and other board members believe it's important that the board and the superintendent address the issue of public and media statements by staff, and especially by leaders within the district. So if you don't mind, you want me to prompt you with questions, or you want to just speak?
Well, I can just, just speak, and then if you have any questions?
Okay.
Let me do it that way. I'm not going to refer to any personnel matter, but I do want to talk about the issue of communications and media, and the expectations from my office, and what our practice is. So first of all, the, the practice we normally engage in, that we sort of encourage our staff, is for media to go through our communications office, and they therefore can sort of vet what's appropriate for our staff to comment on and not to comment on, and then, then they would go forward with that, with that release. That usually works. Sometimes our staff are caught off guard, and they may miss that opportunity, but in recent weeks, I've reinforced that expectation. The other, the other thing I would say is, my expectation is for, in particular administrators to, whenever they are in speaking to media, that they're talking specifically around programmatic pieces, around student achievement, and things that are highlighting our schools or our district, and supportive of the vision and the direction of the district and the board. We discourage staff from making commentary around any other areas, and have a process around that in terms of encouraging. There hasn't been in the past any sort of formal policy, and if you look back, there's been lots of comment from different staff on, on different levels, and I know that people have a right to say what they, what they, what they feel in certain situations, but in terms of expectation from me to our administrators, that's the expectation, that anything that we go forward should be supportive of the district and the board, and not put the, the district or the board in any sort of compromising area.
Do you feel that any policy, formal policy is warranted either from, from you in an operational policy, or from us in our, in our policies to govern this?
Yeah, you know what? That's a, that's a really good question, because that's something that actually, we've actually pondered on for a number of years, and even when we had our, our past, one of our executive directors, Paul Irish, when he was here, he was developing something, and it really prompted out of some issues we had on social media and communications, and people making different comments, and we, we talked about how do we, what do we do with that, and that, it's a, it's a reoccurring theme. And I'm not sure how do we find the balance in terms of giving people opportunities for voice, at the same time, keeping their professional integrity. And I would hope that people would look to their professional standards in terms of how they behave. But I know from my perspective, I always respond accordingly, based on what the expectation is, and respond in, in terms of communicating. If there's something that's been inappropriate to staff, then I would follow up, but that's not something I would share publicly, that, you know, this happened, so therefore I did this with this staff, or anything like that.
You said that you reiterated with your administrators, was there any kind of communication beyond that level recently? Because you and I had a discussion offline, that this is not just administrative, it's also staff, right?
It's the staff. I haven't done a recent communication to, to the general staff, but our systems leaders have had that message, in terms of what was the appropriate expectation, as a professional and leader in our district, that there is a certain level of integrity they have to maintain, regardless of what they might feel on any particular issue.
Okay, that's, that's all, those are the questions I have, but I think if any, any other commissioner, I think, has any other comments or questions, I think that's appropriate.
Commissioner Curry?
As a co-chair of the Curriculum slash Personnel Committee, where community members might be expecting to voice opinions that are inappropriate for me to comment on regarding personnel, I'm concerned about that. My, I guess my guideline is, listen, but don't communicate, but don't have an opinion. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think you've heard it from our council a number of times, in terms of, be careful, in terms of, you know, commenting on particular staff performance, or, you know, I would, I would say, be cautious around that.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang, and Commissioner Fisher. Do you want to speak to the Hunt?
Sure. The other thing, so for those who are not, for I'll frame the, I think it was, is it two Fridays ago, maybe now, Hunt had a dance, and in that dance, there was alleged racial incident that sort of exploded within the dance. And so we've had the fallout of that. Administration have had to interview a number of students, and work with staff, and have central office staff and other workers supporting and working with students, to try to bring some restorative practice to what's, what's happening. And these, these issues are always difficult, because, you know, to name it is, is really hard for individuals, you know, when there are some levels of discrimination, it's hard for people to accept that. And so it's an educational opportunity for our students, and I would say that admittedly, some of our administrators have, we've had this conversation, actually, at our systems leaders, in terms of how do we address these type of issues, and I think even our administrators have said, some, some of them are not equipped to have these tough conversations. And so we've had a reoccurring theme around equity at our systems leaders, and we're looking at how we can continue to have training for our administrators, so they can support in these situations, because we have really good people, and sometimes they feel paralyzed, they're not sure which, which way to go, and so a lot of support has to happen, and we're using this as a learning opportunity, and be able to bring some support. I know the board is also engaging, I think, next month, we've got unconscious bias training, so that's great, that's a good example for the rest of the system, to say that this is important, and we'll be. That's a good example for the rest of the system to say that this is important and we'll be working on that. I know that Commissioner Curry had some thoughts she wanted to share on this, on this as well, too.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang. Commissioner Curry?
Thanks for making the time, Superintendent O'Bang, to bring this up. Some parents contacted me about the issue to find out what the plan is for how it will be handled. And the parents expressed a number of things that I'd like to share because I think there's a fair amount of confusion. And it would be helpful to understand more about how the district will convey the information to the public and our community partners. First, I think it's important or critical for us to recognize how painful it is for students of color to stand up to racial bullying at all. And when it's referred to as alleged, it becomes more difficult and problematic. It was reported by the district that the investigation found that students had not directly heard a racial slur but were reacting to a rumor. In this case, it seems like the word alleged is being used to imply that someone may have made up something or there were assumptions based on a rumor. And this is problematic in a couple of different ways. If the person who alleged racial harassment had occurred is a student of color, the suggestion that it was made up or overblown negates experiences of students of color. If the person who alleged the harassment is a white student, it may point to a heightened need and to immediately focus on educating students on the impact that this statement has on students of color. So, I think there's concern that the district's investigation was dismissing the rumor. And the words alleged in investigation are, are technical words that the Human Rights Commission uses and they have very specific meanings. And so, I think it's important for us to be careful about that language because if there was already a finding that nothing happened, then people are wondering, why is there a restorative practice and what is it approaching? Or what is it addressing? Is it addressing that someone started a rumor or that the rumor is harmful? For any families and students of color for whom this may have created a difficult and different experience than their white peers, the statement, "No truth to the allegation," represents a microaggression and is a negation of someone's experience that may be legitimate. So, I think we all need to really understand that people of color live with microaggressions every day and that if there was a, um, an attempt to literally whitewash the incident, then, you know, that would be a really good reason to stop and pause and, and communicate very fully and comprehensively to the community, to reassure our community of color that, um, you know, their needs and questions are warranted and being addressed thoroughly. Thanks.
Thank Commissioner Curry for raising this to the board level. These are difficult conversations, uh, for, especially for, um, some of our staff who are not equipped to have the conversations. And I would say, first of all, that there is, um, a level of systemic racism within our schools and in particular within the Hunt. I know that the conversations the administration had with some of the students, they've sort of acknowledged some of those feelings, um, the challenges, you know, they're, they're youth. And they, and sometimes it's difficult for them to specifically name and it's, um, it's challenging. But it's not something that we're going to stop addressing. And as I said, we are in the process of looking at the, uh, the best strategies to kind of support the environment. At the same time, give our staff some training so they can be equipped to support, um, our students. We don't have, to be honest with you, we don't have, um, the staff that can respond at the most appropriate level, um, in our, in the school immediately. And so, we, we kind of acknowledge that. But we know we're, we're going to have to do some work to try to, um, to do better.
And if I may, Superintendent O'Bang, I would like to recognize, uh, staff member Henry Sparks, who along with Principal Scheit and Assistant Principal Kelly, who did meet the weekend after the dance or during that weekend, dedicated time and effective communication to it.
Having seen Sparks this week as well, he is a dedicated individual that we are fortunate to have in this district. And at budget time, you know, when we talk about his needs and the equity work that the DE and I committee and Commissioner Carey and Commissioner Ivanik lead, you know, connecting his work and restorative work is imperative. But I, I acknowledge Principal Scheit and Kelly, Assistant Principal Kelly and Henry Sparks for their work on this. And they will continually have our support along with Superintendent O'Bang and staff. And we are mindful of that. So, thank you. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Rawls?
I've heard of, also heard from parents, and I'm wondering how are they being supported? How can they, what are the venues or the ways in which they can get more information, get more clarity, also be a part of the restorative process, too? I think it sounds like staff needs more training, that I hope is obvious. But I also know that a lot of the systems that eventually get put into place are because of a long process. And sometimes that process has to start with a form filed. And I think there are some parents that want to know where that form is. I'm, I'm saying, what kind of venues do they have in order to make a grievance or to have this topic be a part of, or have, get more information about what the process is?
That's great.
Testing. No, I, I would encourage parents, they can always go directly to the school administration. I think they would welcome that if there are parents who want to be part of the process of support and actually know of resources as well, too, that they engage in that conversation. Because they do want to create an environment. And we know that a lot of the, um, sort of behaviors or negative behaviors are enforced, reinforced outside of the school at times. And so, whenever we can have partners like parents coming forward, then the messages can be congruent. So, I would say there are parents who are, um, keen about getting more information or get, they should contact the school directly.
Commissioner Carey?
Could, would it be on here with the district to just send out a formal communication about that to the Hunt parents about that opportunity?
Sure.
Thanks.
Great idea. Thank you. And next on the agenda is good news. And Superintendent O'Bang? After Russ pulls it up, Saban, our student rep, would like to also just share one thing, good news that he forgot about the high school. Okay.
I was going to grab that for people.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
This is, uh, I'm going to talk a little bit about disability awareness. Considering it is Disability Awareness Month, um, I had planned to mention this eventually and I did not want to make this meeting any later. But I think it's considering the time and also considering the fact that we are looking at the re-envisioning with a lot of disability awareness stuff, it might be a good time to start getting all the, all the words right, essentially. So, um, I, I only have a little bit of stuff I have to say, but this is stuff that I think it does matter. And it's basically, the one thing that is, is hard to get at first is that handicap is not the right term. Handicap is, it implies a sort of like self-imposed portion of it. And that's not what a disability is. And so, just like, um, and so you would, you would refer to someone as a person with a disability. And, and just like that, you wouldn't say handicap parking spot. You would say the accessible parking spot or the disability parking spot, um, just to, to be more inclusive. And the other thing is, just like you would say people of color, you say a person with a disability because of people first. You don't want to, you don't want to confine them to their disability. So, I just think those are, it's an important thing. And if we're going to start talking about it and putting that out into the public, it would be really nice to be able to get that stuff right and be ahead of the game for that. So, I know it's like, it's not a thing that people learn about much. It's not like it's not covered well, unfortunately. But if you have any questions, you're welcome to ask me. Or I'm sure you all know Kate Stein. She was the one that taught me all of this. So, if you have any questions, ask me, ask her. And I'd love to talk to you about this because it's interesting.
Thank you for sharing.
Excellent. So, hopefully, board members saw the press release that we had sent out around Disability Employment Awareness Month. And I totally agree that we should use people-first language, right, always around that. So, we've recognized on behalf of the district and the board, a statement to recognize this month as Disability Awareness Month. And so, that's out there. And hopefully, people can see that we are an inclusive district and board and we welcome all abilities in, um, working and learning in our, in our district. So, that's one step forward, hopefully, that we can share that communication. Are those all the graphics?
Two, yeah, these are four pictures.
Go ahead.
Okay. My first, my first time, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, me?
Yeah.
So, a couple, uh, our two items. Our first would be, um, as many of you know, we held a, um, the BHS Re-envisioning Committee. The BHS Re-envisioning Committee, uh, held a very successful press conference on Thursday. So, a big thank you to Claire and to Kate Stein and to Liz Curry for pulling all those pieces together and having so many presenters. So, you can find this, I'm not going to read it. We, we posted a lengthy press release last week that just recaps everybody who spoke. And you can also go to the BHS Register Facebook page if you want to actually view the, um, press conferences in its entirety. So, some of the highlights that we just wanted to share were Mayor Weinberger and Kate Stein and Isaac presented as well. And Andrew Stiles of the BEA. And I had, sorry, Liz, I had a picture of you as well. And I would recommend that you go to the BHS Register Facebook page to watch the press conference, particularly to see the students. There were seven different students who, um, gave comments. And when you hear that seven students gave comments, you go, oh, I'm not going to watch seven people talk. They each said two-sentence phrases that were like, every time they spoke, you, you were very moved. And you could tell that like one person said, "We need schools that are safe." And that's all she said. And to just hear that so succinctly come from the students, I think, was very powerful for the community. And I, I hope that people will go listen to that.
Just in terms of like recording, saying, um, my, like, small individual, but. My name is spelled I-S-A-A-C. So, I, I don't know if this is being sent out anywhere, but if it's possible to have it changed. That is my fault. No, it's fine. It gets, everybody thinks it has the two S's. It makes more sense, but.
You like A's, right?
So, our second piece of good news that we'd like to share with you, this is a press release that will be going out tomorrow morning. We are so excited. Christie Galiz, as many of you know, is our Director of Expanded Learning Opportunities. She was the one that secured the huge grant that we talked about in June. She has been selected as one of just fifteen after-school ambassadors in the United States this year. So, we'll be celebrating her and give her a round of applause. And that's her smiling face. And if you see her, you can say congratulations. Ask her how you can support the work of after-school. And, um, hopefully, she'll be here next month. So, while we won't have a piece to actually recognize her, uh, I imagine the superintendent will say, you will remember that this is the person that we recognized last month.
And I, I believe she sent you an invite, uh, for a function. So, if you can go, I'm sure she'd appreciate to, to see board support there. Okay?
Great.
That's it?
Great. Next is Superintendent Monitoring Reports.
Okay, so we're almost to the end. It's the last report here. So, one of the monitoring reports is Hiring and Treatment of Staff. And I have, uh, Executive Director Nikki Fuller to share. I know you've received it and you've read it, so I'm not going to read it to you. But I'm going to have Nikki just highlight a few areas that I think would be appropriate for the board to, um, to sort of emphasize.
Okay, um, I, can I? I have a bit of a cold, so, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. As you know, this is the two-point-two Hiring and Treatment of Staff Monitoring Report. Uh, this is our second time doing this report. So, there's a little bit of additional information compared to, uh, last year. And so, the first limitation, um, is to operate without written personnel, they were not supposed to operate, without written personnel rules that clarify rules for staff, provide for effective handling of grievances and protect against wrongful conditions. You can see the interpretation of the superintendent under, um, the Interpretation Section. The, the areas we want to point out, and since many of you weren't here last year, I'll point out some things that maybe, um, we had already done last year. But, um, the district's, uh, personnel policy is on, um, our website. We are in, currently in the process of, uh, redrafting that personnel policy. It's quite, it's kind of a task when you have, uh, HR offices built busy all day. So, we've now decided that we will probably have to do some evenings and just work on that. And we'll start bringing that forward, um, to directors and staff to sort of see the, the changes that need to be made. Additionally, uh, we also provide an annual new educators orientation each year in which we provide information about the district, our policies, as well as, uh, information regarding our EL services, uh, our diversity services and so forth. Oh, and, um, during, um, that orientation, uh, we also, um, invite the BEA to participate and share information that they may have. So, it's sort of a joint effort, um, in that regard. We also do a new administrators training, uh, myself and the, um, our lead principal, Bonnie Johnson-Ayton. When we have new, uh, just going over policies, procedures. Being in a district with eight union contracts, uh, it can be overwhelming for a new principal or administrator. And so, we go over some of the things they need to know, where they need to get, um, help. Obviously, it takes more than one, um, little, uh, training that we do, but we do support them throughout the school year. We are also in the process of updating, uh, job descriptions. Currently, the way our process works is that every time we have a new position, we're now requesting from our administrators that they update the, um, the actual job description. That was a way to just start, uh, getting us updated. Additionally, uh, we've, we actually are meeting Thursday. We're having a retreat to start working on developing those job descriptions with 1,200 employees. That's going to take a little while, but, um, we are getting those updated. Oh, uh, the second one with regard to effective, um, handling of grievances, all eight collective bargaining agreements are on, uh, our website. We've, I believe, worked quite well with, um, with Andrew and with JP Gagnon. We do get quite a few, um, I should say quite a few, but we do get grievances. And I think this is an important point to make to the board is that very often, uh, people see grievances as a negative. And that's not an environment I come from. They are, I actually believe that grievances are, are part of the process. They help us to, um, understand what the contract says. If we have been in violation of a contract, it's brought to our attention. And sometimes more than often than not, the contract just isn't clear. We often think we're saying something clearly, right? And then later, we find out that ten people in the room didn't understand what we said. And so, that's true with contracts as well. And so, we do have grievances and they're not a negative thing. They really do provide us an opportunity, um, to address issues that need to be addressed and sometimes get clarity where we need clarity. So, we do have, this year, uh, we reorganized, um, our staff in the HR office and now have a person who is a dedicated, uh, employee relations manager whose job is to address grievances. Uh, I also continue to address grievances because, um, it's impossible for one person, in addition to complaints and other investigations that we have to do. And he also does, we do a lot of work around background checks and, um, that's quite tedious as well. Uh, so we, but, making that adjustment has helped us to be able to respond as quickly as possible to any complaints or grievances that we receive.
Can I go to the, um, the hiring stuff?
Okay. Okay, I'm going to get then, because I know you guys want to get out of here. I'm just going to go down to the hiring, uh, stuff. Limitation number five, which says we are not to cause or allow the recruitment of, hiring of administrators, faculty or staff outside the district's inclusive recruitment and hiring processes designed specifically to increase and ensure a culturally proficient and diverse workforce in the district. The status of that, we, the, um, our office has concluded is partially in compliance. We have, um, as I've indicated, uh, we have quite a few things that are on our webpage. One of which is, uh, we do have a hiring process, I should say a hiring procedure that we use with all hiring and administrators. and, um, by and large, most comply, uh, we still struggle with some portions of that, and which is why we have, um, the partial compliance. Um, there's a, um, a number of things, uh, for example, when, when people start working, uh, we have to be very clear about when they can work, when they can't work, um, because there's lots of process in HR, as you know, uh, not that made by us, though, made by the U.S. government. Uh, anyway, um, so we annually write this procedure, um, and there's a process for different levels, there's a process, obviously, for, um, administrators, as well as, uh, personal, personal services, uh, teachers, uh, paraeducators. Uh, and again, we're, um, we're also bound by all those contracts as to how we hire, uh, how we post, and so forth. Uh, the one thing that, um, see, I think you've all heard us brag about is, um, we do have, uh, Talent Ed, uh, Recruit and Hire, which is our software that we now use, that really helps us to, uh, have a better way to track, and particularly around those issues, uh, related to our, uh, diverse, um, hires, um, is previously we were unable to track, uh, where people were finding our ads, uh, we can now do that, um, and just having a system that if you asked me, uh, in the last two years, uh, information, I could pull up a computer and say, oh yeah, this is what happened, versus having to go to the, the some, I think about three thousand files that are still in drawers that we still have to use, 'cause we aren't fully, fully, um, implemented, uh, but it's an excellent system, it helps us to track, um, and I think what it will do is it will help us to get, um, our hiring administrators, uh, further on board in terms of the, the little details, like, uh, one of the things this year we will be insisting on is that all interviews that are scheduled have to be scheduled through the Talent Ed process, so that way our office actually knows who you've decided to interview, and that they've been contacted, it's electronic, it's pretty easy, um, and it, 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 it gives us a, um, a paper trail. Um, and that's one of the pieces that many, uh, hiring administrators and most people don't get, um, unless you're a sort of HR or legal, uh, we have to maintain those records for a period of time, and it's unfortunate that we've had complaints from the EEOC, which is why we have the partial compliance from the EEOC, and there's pieces of information we don't have. Uh, but this, this program really will help us to have all those pieces and be able to respond accordingly. Um, and I just wanted to share some of our data. Russ, did you put that on?
To the very last slide, last slide, last page.
I don't see it. Oh, it's not on mine, put on yours. Okay.
Tell me when to stop.
Keep going. Um, we just like to sort of show, uh, of, since, um, last year from Sep, we, our, yeah, our, uh, monitoring year is September first uh, to August thirty-first, and, uh, this shows that we had, um, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six applications in the district. Uh, so there are lots of people applying for jobs in the district. Uh, last year, uh, that number was only slightly higher, I think it was around thirty-one hundred, it's in the report. Um, you just moved it.
I just saw the report.
Okay. You're getting them, hold it, okay. Uh, so what I've done here is, you can see that last year was thirty-one fifty-one, but what I think is, um, probably most telling about this graphic that's moving again, um, is it just shows you that we are hiring all year long. Go back, so they can see.
All the way down.
I already showed that.
As you can see, you can see the crazy time right there, uh, but it gives you a clear indication that, uh, we're hiring, um, all year long, um, and just this year, we hired, um, uh, the total hires were six hundred and thirty-one, uh, hires. Uh, some people will be like, "Six hundred and thirty-one, are you kidding?" We actually hire, uh, approximately two hundred people over the summer as well, and that process is not any shorter than, than the rest of our processes, 'cause they have to complete applications, they have to do I-nines, they have to do all those things that they're required to do. Uh, so yes, we hired six hundred and thirty-one people, some of them are small jobs, part-time jobs, temporary jobs, but, um, we try to give every single one of those, um, hires, um, our full attention. Um, I'm sure, uh, many of you, uh, are most concerned about our certified positions, uh, and again, um, the total applications for certified positions was nine hundred and thirty-one this past year, um, and, uh, there were a hundred and thirteen hires.
So the, the comparison?
Which one?
Between the, the two, F-Y eighteen, F-Y seventeen?
For a certified?
Yeah, well, you can see.
Yeah, so for a certified, I'm, for certified, uh, as I indicated, uh, we, uh, got nine hundred and thirty-one applications. Last year, we got eight hundred and forty-two, uh, so we're pretty much, again, um, pretty even as to, um, how many applications we've gotten, and I, I actually think that's a positive thing, uh, given, um, the job market, um, is fairly thin, very lean, um, and so the fact that we've received that many applications, and we're able to hire, uh, a hundred and thirteen, um, certified employees, um, uh, says a lot, given, um, the current, um, the current market.
Thank you, Detective Director Fuller, and?
Any questions?
Questions?
Uh, very quick question, thank you, Jill, very quick question. How many certified positions do we have in the district, roughly speaking, right now?
Um, I'd say about four hundred and thirty.
Four hundred and thirty?
Yes.
So if I were to do the math here, a hundred and thirteen total hires in that period, over four hundred and thirty. It's roughly a quarter of the positions.
Mm-hmm.
Is it fair to draw the conclusion that our turnover is therefore roughly a quarter of our teachers?
Actually, actually not completely, and the reason is, is that, um, particularly in this year, there's quite a bit, we've hired a lot of internal candidates as well, and so a lot, it, it, some of the hires appear as internal candidates as well. So, so we may have got, so we may have gotten, let's say we got, uh, nine hundred and thirty-one applications, um, many of those include internal candidates, and this year, I know we hired probably somewhere in the range of thirty to forty internals that were transfers to other positions. Right.
Right, so one, this was a question we had last year as well, too, in terms of, uh, turnover ratio, and I think we had the other chart, Nikki showed the comparison, um, from our district and surround district, and then sort of what is the general, uh, turnover for a district our size. If you look at this data here, it shows a comparison, there's a lot of similarities between last year and this year. The total applications are pretty much the same, around three thousand, and the certified's pretty close, and one, the pieces that, um, we could probably add another bar here that shows the, um, I remember last year when I went to the orientation, we had sixty hires, well, sixty hires, this year there was twenty-five, so even though we have a hundred and fourteen, many of those positions, because this is data pulled from the system, are vacancies, they're internal, so we have staff moving around, so that's still, so when the staff moves from this position to that position, great, they got a position, but now there's a vacancy here, so there's another vacancy, but then it might be filled by internal, um, uh, staff. Another bar that would probably be helpful would be, um, externals, in and outs, right, that's what, that's what, that's what I wanna see, too, yeah.
Thank you.
And if I could just, um, add to that, uh, one of the concerns as, um, for HR, um, school-related HR, um, is the conversation that's going on across the country is the fact that there are just not many people going into teaching, regardless to who they are, and it, it's just a struggle, um, to keep teachers in the profession, and so there's lots of conversations about how do we do that, and, and for those who are out there, how do, how do we become the employer of choice? And, um, recently, I was at a training, and, uh, the one thing they said is, "You have to be electronic, you have to have technology." And so if I'm pitching for anything is to continue, um, to build our technology, um, and have ways for people to access us and us to access people from around the country, uh, we can't just, it used to be, oh, we're just looking for people from Vermont or people from the region, it has to be across the country as well as the world, um, so I encourage you to, um, consider that as we, uh, are looking to, um, build our, our teacher ranks.
And just last comment and wrap up, this, this graphic here, for those of you who, uh, haven't checked, this kinda gives you a little bit of contextual, um, you can see like what the pools are like, so we're, we're not in a deficit, um, area, I know many of the, uh, sort of the outer districts, they might put a posting up, you might get one or two, um, individuals, but you can see even from year to year, we've had, um, good numbers, and this is broken down by grade, so you can kinda see the number of vacancies to that, um, you can do the percentage, um, hired next to it, so that gives you an idea that when we put a posting out, we get applicants in Burlington, that's not our challenge in terms of getting applicants, you know, our challenge is, just being able to pay more money so we can hire more people.
I have a quick hiring question.
Yes, Commissioner. So we have a handful of.
Interim administrators at the moment, and, um, I know that in many schools, administrative hiring is starting to ramp up right about now, so I'm wondering when, what the timeline is for posting those positions.
The, I know that Nikki and I office will start that process, um, getting ready, we're, we're in the fall, so toward November, December, we'll probably start looking to, uh, put postings, usually candidates like to have over the winter break to prepare their packages, and then the officials start in the, in the new year, so we'll be looking to, uh, look at our timelines real soon.
Commissioner Carrick?
Thanks, Nikki, for this. Incredible report and all the numbers, but I have a question about the internal hires, so, some of those are for newly created positions.
Some are.
Is that right?
Some are, but.
Okay. So, some are, some aren't?
Yeah, sometimes we have, uh, we're a unique district, and then there's, um, all kinds of opportunities, we're one of the few districts, um, that allows, for example, some of our teachers might, um, decide they wanna try something different, and we would give them a leave of absence and place their position as an LTC, and they might, in turn, so that they will be an internal hire, so, uh, for example, we have, um, what's that position, um, at the high school, the?
PLP?
PLPs, right, um, so we, so, so we allow our teachers those opportunities, so yes, so they, but again, those, they still have to apply for those positions, and then we have to put them in those positions, so those, and we've had a number of those for a while. There are some new positions that, say, for example, a teacher may decide, uh, there's a position, um, at, admins that they prefer, uh, maybe they were at the elementary, they wanna try middle school, so they might apply for that position and transfer into that, be, apply for that position to be hired in that position.
But, but, just to follow that a little bit, but those, those positions already existed, and I'm, I'm asking about newly created positions within the district, I wonder how many there are, what they are, I mean, I'll, I'll find out, we'll find out eventually, but.
Yeah, you, you, one of the things you can probably look at is our last, last year's budget, we did, um, there were some pieces of new positions. So let's say, for instance, if we had twenty, um, teachers across the system, which we don't, and we added twenty-two, so you'd see there's two more positions, so there were some new positions created last year, um, and if I had the budget presentation, you'd see the breakdown, um, of some where we added, uh, positions, so we've actually in the last couple of years been able to add, uh, not significantly, but little bits, I mean, we'd love to, to be able to do more, but, I mean, that's the whole budget conversation, right, in terms of, um, doing that.
Commissioner.
You wanna go?
Commissioner Ivanka?
How you doing?
Cause mine has to do with limitation two.
Okay, I'll go, um, thank you, Nikki, um, I have a question about some of the interpretation or, uh, so, uh, the one that you said that you're partially in compliance, so Limitation Number Five.
Mm-hmm.
So can you explain why you're partially in compliance?
Well, I'd say that we're partially in compliance in terms of the specific area of following the hiring procedures. Uh, by and large, most administrators are in compliance, they follow the process, uh, but we do have some who struggle with it a little bit, and that's the reason we put partial compliance, because I wouldn't wanna put not, not in compliance when there are many who do, but there are some who have not, and we are working with them, um, to be in compliance.
Okay, and so, thank you, um, and, and the, the second question, well, so let me go back to that, you, you had put, uh, a lot of great data, which I really appreciate, I've already used that data before in, in a discussion, but there currently are, we don't have any targets, metrics for, uh, diversity, equitable hiring, is that correct?
We do.
We do?
Yes, so we do have a, um, Employment Equity Plan, um, which I will, you, you, this.
It's not part of this?
Uh, no, it's not part of this, it's a separate strategy around diversifying our workforce.
Right, that was a goal, right, wasn't it?
Um, yeah, and it's aspirational goal, and I know Nikki will probably speak to this, or even Jill's in the room, that we can't really, um, set quotas or targets, but we have some aspirational.
Okay.
Goals around that, right, and I will at some point come back and say, hey, look, we've started doing this, and this is what, this is what's working well, and this is not working well, but yeah, we are definitely in the game in trying to diversify our workforce and increasing the complement in these numbers.
Okay, thank you, and then, um, going scrolling back to the top was around the, uh, I'm sorry, um, number one?
Mm-hmm.
B.
Yes.
So Limitation, operate without personnel rules that B, provide for effective handling of grievances.
Yes.
Um, so I'm really interested in the word effective.
Okay.
So what I've heard from staff informally is that the process for grievances.
To address them has not been effective, and so I'd love to see some data around that, right, so what I've heard is the number of open grievances and the length of time it takes to process them has not met their historical expectations. So I'd love to get some data from you about that, so that I can have a data-driven discussion.
I'm happy to provide, I'm sorry, I'm happy to, to provide you with data, uh, however, I think that data has to include, uh, a, um, qualitative, uh, component, uh, because each group that we deal with, we deal with, we have different relationships with, and so, um, it is not, and I think, I think it's important to hear the other side of that, because very often, uh, for example, each contract may have, say, an informal process, and somebody starts out just sort of chatting about something. There's no rules that tells us when we have to stop talking informally, uh, it's not until we get to a certain level, it says you have so many days, and then we might say, okay, we're gonna, there's sometimes conversations about, well, why don't we hold off? Because we need to be able to look at this, that, or the other, sometimes they're not that simple, and I think the unfortunate part is, is that the membership doesn't always know what's going on between, um, their leadership and us. That's not to say that, uh, they're doing the wrong thing, but sometimes we are working together, and I think, uh, any conversation, uh, with most people would, would say that we are working with them, and sometimes it doesn't, it's not a quick answer. Um, and yes, occasionally, some take longer than expected, but by and large, we try to, we really do try to comply with the contract, and again, we don't file the grievances, but we're the ones who have to get all the information and pull it together, and that doesn't always happen as quickly as it could, but most of the time it actually does, and it's usually, and it's usually not being ignored, we're in regular conversations, and, um, and I'll put it real plain, is that I, I talk to the union pretty regularly, um, in fact, Saturday and Sunday nights, trying to get this stuff resolved, uh, so I think I'm happy to sh, share when we get things done, but I don't think that tells the whole story, you have to have the whole story to know what we're trying, what we're trying to build, uh, with our, our, with our unions, uh, we are trying to build relationships, and sometimes it takes a little more time than some of these, when you got eight different unions, sometimes you're gonna miss a deadline.
Uh, Commissioner Fisher, I think I understand your question, because you're asking, how do we, you're highlighting the word effective, right? So some data to show this is what it means by effective, the frequency, right, that, so that, that's where you're getting that, right?
Some kind of evidence.
Some kind of evidence, yes.
The frequency.
Yeah, because when you say effective, what does that mean, right, so effective means every five is resolved within, or whatever.
Could mean that, you know, you get a letter from the BEA saying we're satisfied with the length of time it takes to, to, to do grievances on average.
What, I don't know what the evidence is, but I haven't seen evidence that the process is effective. I hear what you're saying, Nikki, but I wanna, I wanna see evidence.
Yeah, 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 you're talking about empirical, right, I get, okay.
Commissioner Ivanka?
So I have an issue with Limitation Two, which says that discriminate against any staff member for non-disruptive expression of dissent. Um, in May, at our Capitol Enga, uh, Capitol Plan Meeting in, at IAA, we heard from two teachers. Um, these were, I don't, brave enough to speak up, one of them had been in the district for over thirty years, I believe. One of them had been in the district for over thirty years, I believe. And both had mentioned that they are afraid to speak up, so in case that, they felt like they were gonna get reprimanded. And also my conversation with a few teachers in the district, they've stated the same issue. That they're afraid to speak up because they think that something's gonna happen with them. So I would question the in compliance statement of that limitation. And if there was some kind of metric that we can measure this with, such as perhaps the climate survey that went out back in May, to show us that, what's the climate among the staff in the district?
Yeah, I think that's a bit anecdotal in terms of... I don't know how to phrase that. The, because we, I know the HR department works on grievances and complaints. And when people bring things forward, then we know that we're addressing something. If no one brings anything forward, then we have nothing to count to say. If people are walking around thinking, okay, they're being disrespected forever, I don't know what people are thinking. We don't know what people are thinking. You can't really evaluate that. But we can evaluate the frequencies and the communications that we're getting through the formal processes that are set up through the BEA, the representatives they have, and through the formal complaint processes we have that people can, can put forward. Or even outside litigation through the Equal Employment Office, they can go through that. Or attorney, you know, those kind of things tell us that, okay, this is what's happening. And those are structures are put in place to protect people. And I'm sure there are labor laws that allow for employees to go when they feel that they may have retribution within their employee. And so that's what we would base it on in terms of responding to this.
Commissioner Fussberg?
I'd like to speak to that too. This is, I have a little bit of issue of not knowing if this is an evaluation process or monitoring, you know. This is why I have some real concerns about policy governance. This is, this is, you know, we're talking about a monitoring written, written by the, by the people who we're supposed to be evaluating. And they give us the data, but we're collecting data at the same time. But it's called anecdotal in that. And that's not real fair. When I, when I first decided to run for school board, I was really embarrassed in that people who wanted to, people who knew that I was running said, I want to talk to you, but I can't talk to you now. Let's, we need to talk off school grounds. I need to have your personal, your personal Gmail, all of that kind of stuff. People that I knew for many years, but were, had fear of talking to me. And then I called around to the various schools, because I thought my job as a school commissioner was to know what was going on in the schools. And actually, my constituents were asking me. And I called around and, and some of the principals invited me in. It was a great conversation because they knew me. Other principals called me on the phone, said they couldn't talk to me in school, but they talked to me on the phone. Other principals said they couldn't. And as a matter of fact, one person whom I could have been very helpful for in the preschool, if I had asked to go in in February, I wasn't allowed to even meet with her until I was actually sworn in. And if I had known the situation at the pre, at the triple E better, I could have been a much more of a stronger advocate for that, for what, what she was trying to do. So I, I don't know exactly how to go about this, but I'm hoping that the, the atmosphere, the climate in our district has changed since this new board has been elected. People feel that it has. I don't, I haven't heard lately, I can't talk to you, or don't talk to me in school. But I heard a lot of that. And that, so I'm assuming that that was the past year. And that sometime, we, we won't hear that anymore. And we'll hear that people are confident that they can give us information. And that's, that's basically what I like, I'm hoping that this monitoring, I don't think this monitoring report really reflects what, what I was hearing. Trying to become an edu, become educated. Because I feel as representative of the people, I need to be critical in my thinking and also be knowledgeable about what's going on, not from one source, but a variety of sources.
Thank you, Commissioner Fussberg. Commissioner Wick?
Thank you. Just briefly, I would interpret for what it's worth, this particular clause prohibiting the superintendent from discriminating against any staff member for non-disruptive expression of dissent, to include the right of whether it's a principal, or a teacher, or someone else to speak up, let's say hypothetically during budget season, if they were advocating constructively and respectfully for their needs. I would hope that to some degree, that would not result in any kind of disciplinary action or letter of reprimand, or insubordination letter, or otherwise calling to the mat an employee for speaking up constructively, or who believed it was constructive in advocating for their needs. I know that, well, it's complicated, but I wanted to just put that out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Can I be so bold to take, because I...
You already spoke, yeah, but we'll go ahead.
Yeah. So Superintendent Obank, speak to that directly? Because I've heard this anecdotally. Anybody, any leader who spoke up during the budget process, do you feel that, did you? Now, I'm using my words carefully. Was there any feedback that you gave them about speaking up during the district budget process?
It's amazing that I'm actually commenting on this. It's interesting. We, we have a budget process, and the budget process has the, our administrators have an opportunity to do their analysis based on their schools. And they come together as systems leaders, and they have conversations, and they've collaborated as teams. And they've been forward what their priorities are. And then the executive council also looks at what they've identified as priorities and does analysis on that and gives feedback. Last year, I think we had eight million dollars' worth of items. And the board approved about one point five million. So no ideas were shut down, but you can't support all eight million. And you have to align it with our strategic plan and achievement gap strategies that we have. I don't think anyone hasn't had an opportunity to say, hey, this is what I think I need. But it's up to our leaders to have the conversations around the priorities and decide that. So, yeah, so that's, that's just normal sort of practice. There would not be any need for, for me or any superintendent to discipline anyone for that. I mean, at the end of the day, I still get to make the recommendations, so why would I even bother to discipline someone for that? It's like, okay, give me the data, what do you think? And then we've got eight million, we can only spend one point five million. Someone has to make a decision at some point, right? And then it comes to the board, and that gets done. So there wouldn't be a need for any sort of discipline in the budget process for people bringing forward their ideas. I mean, we want people to bring forward their ideas, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
Thanks. So I have been through five budget seasons. And I know that in the last year or two, a number of the building administrators were very upset with what was proposed. And I spent hours on the phone with a couple of them who I've known for a very long time. And they were extremely unhappy with what was being proposed in a number of cases and what the board was supporting in a number of cases. And I had that conversation with them. And I also said to them, you know, I think some of them have been in the district for a long, long time and were, were used to a different practice under a different superintendent. It was a practice that was very informal. It was a practice of, you know, a complete open door policy. It was a practice where conversations happened regularly, informally and formally. But it was a practice that did not, I think, was expensive. It was incredibly time and resource consuming, and I think it was sloppy. And I think it resulted in the deficit we ended up with. Because I think we had an administrator with a, a superintendent with a very big heart and a very, you know, really strong personal relationships with staff and administrators where it was hard to say no to people. And it was hard to be directive and decisive and authoritative. And I think people were uncomfortable with that in an, in an environment where they've worked for a long time and they've gotten used to that, it's very comfortable. And it was very expensive. And so I think when, you know, there's a culture shift to have an approach to budgeting that is more directive and is more decisive and is, and we have a superintendent who is not afraid to call shots and have people be unhappy. I have executive directors like that in my life, and I've had them, and I will have them. And, and I think it's a change from what we had before. And I think what we had before, we paid for that literally. And so I think people might interpret situations in a way that is expressed as, you know, receiving repercussions. At the same time, we, we've asked the superintendent to establish clear communication channels with his staff, which he has. And so I think when he tries to enforce them, people may interpret that as discipline or being, you know, shut down. So I think there's a perception issue here that's getting played out. I've had people come to me saying they're afraid of retribution, and they've given me very specific reasons why. And I've talked to them about that and shared with them that I think there's two sides to the story. And I have not experienced that people are afraid to come to me, or that I've never told not to talk to staff or super, or building administrators. So I think this is a complex issue, and we can't have a double standard. We either want the clear communication channels, or we want that kind of structure in the district to exist for reasons that are related to resource allocation and efficiencies, being a government institution that's getting fewer and fewer dollars. Or, you know, and I think it is a climate issue, and we have addressed that. We've asked for climate, for climate to be a priority. And so I think that is a reason why we need to find a balance. We had a dire fiscal crisis. We had a response that was uncomfortable for people. And it was a cultural shift, and we've had to kind of remake an institution. So I think the climate issue is something that, you know, this falls under, and we should address it under that.
We will.
Don't take my mic's on the November board meeting, we will be. And Executive Director Fuller, he wants to speak.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that several of you have brought up things that you've heard. And my concern is that it's very hard to address what you've heard if I haven't heard it, or we haven't heard it. So if you've heard something and you want a response to X said this happened, that allows us the opportunity to know that there's a complaint. And two, to respond. Because often, there's two sides to a story. It's certainly rarely one side. So my point is, is that I've heard this several times here. And if there are things that people are saying and that's of concern, I'm assuming you would let the superintendent know so that he can let us know, so we can address it. Because the one thing I can assure you that's happening, and I only speak for my department, is that every day, they're doing their very best, they work very hard to try to address the concerns and support employees. So I just encourage you to let us know, because we can't fix what we don't know.
That's a great closing statement. Thank you. Director, anything else?
Received the, the report?
Yes.
So now, yeah, we have to...
Make a motion to...
We have to make a motion.
Of each one?
Well, you can do the whole process.
The whole thing? Okay, great.
To receive the report.
Sure. Commissioner Wick?
I'll move that superintendent is in partial compliance with policy two dot two, hiring and treatment of staff.
Are you just gonna do the whole thing?
You're gonna do the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Yeah.
Any second? Second. Commissioner?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Can I just have one, one last comment? So thank you for, I know we've kind of got into a different conversation around budget and stuff like that. But at least it gives an opportunity for us to share what the concerns are, so we can kind of work to move forward. I would also say, the board also has an opportunity with its monitoring policies. Because I heard a number of comments, like, ooh, that would be under the board's to, to do that. They wanted to get indicating metrics to talk about things that they feel is important. So that's what, there's a two sides to this, right? It's not just the superintendent that brings stuff forward. The board can do its own analysis and supports as well too.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a motion to consider executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session under the authority of one VSA three thirteen A, one B, and E, to discuss labor relations agreements with employees. And to also discuss pending or probable civil litigation to which the board is or may be a party where premature public knowledge as to either situation would clearly place the board at substantial disadvantage.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Wick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we'll move into executive session. Thank you.